Hello. My name is Megan Sathery. I'm with the Lewis County Planning Department, and I want to welcome you to the Planning Commission Public Meeting today. This meeting is taking place in person, streaming live via Zoom, and it is being recorded. For those joining us via Zoom, please remember to mute your phone or device when you are not speaking. If you forget to mute your phone or device, we will mute you. The chat feature is modified so participants may report technical difficulties directly to myself, the clerk. No public comment or questions will be taken through the chat feature. Tonight's meeting is a public hearing on the definition of qualified professional and a workshop on the Comprehensive Plan Periodic Update. In addition, we'll be electing officers for 2024 and adopting the 2024 docket. We will start with a roll call. The following planning commissioners are present in the room. Commissioner Spogen, Russell, Corbin, Moore, and Scootley. The following planning commissioners are present on Zoom. Commissioner Fritsch and Commissioner Alves is absent. With six planning commissioners present, we do have a quorum. We are now ready to begin. Chair Corbin.
Thank you, and welcome back. It's good to have you back. My name is Frank Corbin, and I'd like to call to meeting, excuse me, call to order the meeting of January 14th, 2025 of the Lewis County Planning Commission. Prior to tonight, the commission received the agenda for today, and the agenda is displayed on the screen. I would entertain a motion and a second from the planning commissioners to approve the agenda.
I'd make that motion.
Thank you, Bob. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Roger. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Bearing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye if you're in the room and raise your hand. Excuse me, go ahead and say aye if you're on Zoom.
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes, 6-0. All right. Also, prior to tonight, the commission received the meeting notes from the December 10th meeting. Are there any corrections to the meeting notes, commissioners? Okay. If not, I'll entertain a motion and a second from the planning commissioners to adopt the minutes.
I read them today. They're accurate as usual.
Thank you, Bob. Is there a second?
If that was a motion, I second it.
Okay. All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All right. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes 6-0. Thank you. All right, the next item is public comment. Please note that public comments are different than testimony. Any testimony you want to provide on the definition of qualified professional needs to be provided when the hearing is opened later in the agenda. Now is the time for comments of any subject that you wish to provide that are not part of a public hearing coming up. Has anyone signed up for public comment? Are there any hands on Zoom?
Yes, Ronald Braun.
Okay.
And I'll just give a little spiel real quick. You'll have three minutes to provide your comments. Please begin by stating your name. Once you begin, I will start the timer, which will be displayed on the screen. Let me get that pulled up. Okay, and you may begin whenever you're ready.
My name is Ronald Braun. I was here in December and I gave a little lengthy conversation about how my feelings on this ordinance or this re-adding of rules could increase. And I was passionate about it, not because I have any dogs in the fight. It's just because I do live here in Toledo and in the county. And anytime the government starts to be stronger than what it really should be, I felt that I had the need to actually say something. And this ordinance that is wanting to be adopted, I saw a number of things. One, I was seeing that it was a punitive writing. It was, it was, it wasn't trying to expand the pool of people to come in and try to do work for the county because what you're really trying to do is lower the cost of construction any kind of way you can. It dealt a little bit with the definition, which we'll talk about later, but, but the main thing is that you don't want it to be punitive. And the second thing to that is you don't want to have somebody who's in the management position to be judge and jury. That's not good. Who the jury is going to be should be your commissioners out there. It shouldn't be the department head. They're going to say, hey, here's this. I washed my hands with it. You tell me what to do. I don't want to have that decision on me because all that's going to happen is that you're going to have a whole bunch of attorneys coming down here and gobbling on you. And you don't want to do that. It just doesn't make any sense. So I'm passionate about that part of it. I don't like to see government expanded. I've got 21 years of service, public service as a reviewer. I wrote code. I wrote, helped write ordinances, all that kind of stuff. And I've seen this happen before. And only thing that happens is it goes bad. And I just don't want to see it go bad. Having a definition that actually narrows down a scope of something that you want for true qualifications is great. But going beyond that, I think you're trespassing on rights of other folks that want to do business with the county. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the room that would like to provide public comment? Okay, is there anybody on Zoom who would like to provide public comment? Go ahead and unmute to let me know or raise your hand. Okay, I see no further public comment.
Hey, Mindy, I noticed that Jason is now on the call, so he's joined us. Okay, pursuant to the Planning Commission bylaws, officers shall be elected at the first meeting in January of each year. These two officer positions are chair and vice chair. I will turn it over to Mindy Brooks to facilitate this year's elections. Mindy?
There's an extra one right up there, too. Thank you. Thank you. Mindy Brooks, Director of Community Development. So I will entertain a nomination in a second for the Office of Chair of Planning Commission.
Just threw that softball right out there.
We've done this in the past. I figured you guys are ready for this, right?
We've talked about it a little bit. I would, I really have enjoyed my time on council, and we've been led by great people. And Frank's doing a great job, and I've talked to others. And I would nominate Frank Corbin to serve as chair again.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Frank, will you accept the nomination for chair?
I will. Thank you.
All in favor of electing Frank Corbin to chair of the Planning Commission, please signify by saying aye.
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 With now six votes, that passes. Jason's, Jason, join us online with a thumbs up. Congratulations, Frank. You are Chair of Planning Commission for 2025. And I will now entertain a nomination in a second for the Office of Vice Chair.
So it's interesting. You were going to get off the hook until you didn't show up until 10 minutes after 6:00. So I can't let you off the hook. I'm going to say I would nominate Jason to serve one more year. Had you been here, you'd have been off the hooks, but would you do it one more year?
You weren't going to let me off the hook no matter what.
Is there a second for Jason Alves?
And I thought we were friends, man.
I'll second. Oh, go ahead, Lauren.
Was that, and you accept the nomination, Jason?
Yes, like I said last time, if that's what you want, I'll be happy to do it.
All right. Thank you. Will all those in favor of Jason Alves as Vice Chair of the Planning Commission, please signify by saying aye.
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 And the motion passes unanimously. Congratulations, Jason. You are our Vice Chair for 2025. I will now turn it back over to Chair Corbin.
Thank you. All right. Before us, we have the 2025 docket. Mindy, was there a change or anything that you wanted to make?
There was one change. So as you guys may be aware, those of you who have been on Planning Commission for a while, we don't receive the applications for the Public Benefits Rating System until the end of December. So we did get two that have come in. So we've added that to the docket for the next Planning Commission on January 28th for them to come and do that presentation to you. So that was the one change, the docket, since the last time you saw it.
Okay. And wasn't there some discussion last year about having room in the schedule for initiatives and things that the planning commissioners wanted to raise? I don't see any space available through July, but I wanted to remind the planning commissioners that, you know, if there is an item that you wanted to bring up for us to really hash out, that you get with staff to see, you know, where we can fit that into the schedule. But I wanted to remind everybody because I think it's important that we're not just a Planning Commission that just, you know, takes what staff brings us only, but that we also have some initiative that we want to push. I know, you know, Bob and I are greatly concerned about wetlands and things like that. You know, so if there's something that's really burning, you know, that you want to bring up for us to really consider, to push on to the county commissioners, that we do so with Mindy as soon as possible.
Yes, definitely. Do it as soon as possible because since we are in periodic update for the comp plan, if it is something that needs to be part of the comp plan changes that we're making, we'll need to get it in during this now to July. If it isn't, if it's something that can wait till after, then we can slot it in. We don't have anything in the agenda after comp plan update. So there is time, second half of the year, so thank you.
Thank you. All right, are there any other questions from the planning commissioners about the docket? Okay, I see Jason's fingers, but I don't see a hand raised. So, all right. Okay, I will entertain a motion then to approve the docket as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the docket.
Thank you, Roger. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Bob. Okay, is there any discussion? All right, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes 7-0. All right, thank you. All right. Tonight's first agenda item is a public hearing on the definition of qualified professional. This public hearing will proceed in orderly fashion, and I would ask everyone's cooperation. We'll start with a few simple questions, then a brief staff presentation, followed by questions from the commissioners, and finally take a public testimony. Is there anyone in the audience who believes that the public was not informed in a timely manner? Or anyone online? If you do, please raise your hand. Okay, I don't see anybody in the room or online. All right. Do any of the commissioners have a disclosure that you would like to make? Now is the time to do that. I don't see any online, and I don't see any in the room. Okay.
What would you consider a disclosure?
A disclosure is anything that would be, that you feel would be a conflict of interest. Mindy, anything else other than a conflict of interest?
Yeah, if you don't believe that you can be impartial in making this decision or you stand to have monetary benefit or negative impacts monetarily, then you need to disclose that information.
Yeah, the only disclosure I have, I'm retired now, so I don't have any conflicts. But I've been on the other side of this for a very long time, you know, representing the clients rather than the authoritative process, setting the distances and boundaries and all that standards stuff, so.
That's not a disclosure that you need to make. Most of you up there have been on that side of that as a developer in some other form or fashion. That's one of the reasons why we ask people to be on the Planning Commission.
I'm just trying to stay ahead of this.
No, this is legal disclosure that you need to make before you enter into the deliberations.
Okay, all right, seeing none, I'll turn it over to Mindy.
Thank you again, Mindy Brooks, Director of Community Development. So the information for tonight's hearing was provided to the Planning Commission on December 2nd and January 7th, as well as at the workshop on December 10th. The notice for this hearing was published on December 26th. We've received four pieces of testimony, which have been provided to the Planning Commission, and all materials are available online for the commission and the public. Next slide, please. So we're going to do background information tonight. We'll go through our recommendations responding to some of the Planning Commission's questions from last time, and then we will close for your questions. And then after testimony, I do have a couple potential motions that you may consider. Of course, you do not have to use the potential motions that we present to you, but they are there for availability, so we can bring those up at the end. Next slide. As a reminder, this topic is related to critical areas, which is one of the implementing ordinances under the Growth Management, or sorry, underneath of the Lewis County Comprehensive Plan. The Critical Areas Ordinance is part of meeting state law, specifically the RCWs under 3670A. Next slide, please. So when a wetland or a stream is altered to compose a significant risk to the property onsite or offsite, to avoid inadvertently impacting streams and wetlands during development review, the applicant needs to provide a report completed by a qualified professional that accurately maps the location and correctly classifies the stream and wetland. Lewis County staff review the report as part of the development permit to determine if the report meets the applicable codes. But staff are not qualified professionals. Therefore, we need assurance that the consultant preparing the assessment meets a minimum qualifications at industry standard. Next slide. So what's the problem we're trying to solve? Over the past few years, we have been receiving wetland and stream assessments that are not accurate. They're missing information, and they're not following the state and federal guidelines. When that happens, staff review the report, see there's missing information, or we see that the site plan in the report doesn't match the conditions on the ground, and we have to send it back to the consultant to fix the problems. We have some applications that have gone through three to seven re-reviews. This is a huge cost to the property owner. They are paying their consultant to fix errors, errors that should not have been in the report in the first place. It also takes a lot of staff time to do three to seven re-reviews, time that we could be spending on reviewing other permit applications. By requiring a minimum set of qualifications, we hope to receive fewer reports with as many errors and to reduce the number of re-reviews because reports meet the guidelines the first time. I do want to note, we receive a lot of wetland assessments that meet all the guidelines and are accurate and only take one review. These are typically prepared by people who will meet the new qualifications. They are, we already know that they meet them. Therefore, we do have reason to believe that the new minimum qualifications will result in reports with fewer errors. Next slide, please. As we discussed at the workshop on December 10th, staff are recommending criteria for being a qualified professional for wetland delineations be a professional wetland scientist, having that certification, or having a bachelor's degree in biology, soil science, et cetera. Planning Commission asked if we could only require a two-year degree instead of a four-year degree, and we have done additional research. Next slide, please. Requiring a bachelor's degree for wetland delineations and stream assessments is industry standard in Washington. This is a list of some of the counties and cities that require that bachelor's degree or require a certification that requires a bachelor's degree. We've also provided the list to you in front of you on paper. This is not an exhaustive list. This is just a quick review of looking through the different regulations in the counties and the cities. Next slide. Also, most counties have a similar language for qualified professional. I pulled the language that many counties are using here on the screen. And the Department of Ecology says on their webpage that, and their guidance for hiring a qualified professional. So if you Google "hire a qualified professional to do wetland delineations in Washington", this is the first thing that comes up, and it says that a minimum, a Bachelor of Science or Bachelor of Arts equivalent degree, or at least, and at least two years' experience. Next slide. Staff did look for a professional certification program for a wetland scientist that did not require a bachelor's degree, and we didn't find any. Professional wetland certification programs do require the bachelor's degree, and in some cases, like the professional wetland scientist, at least five years of experience. Wetland delineations is a scientific and technical field, and it is appropriate to require a base level of education and experience. Staff completely understand issues related to cost of obtaining a bachelor's degree. That's not lost on any of us when we talk about that. Staff also recognize that a degree on its own doesn't just qualify somebody for being able to do this work, right? But a four-year degree does provide a baseline in the scientific fields that then can be built on with experience and continued education. Until we in this state have a formal apprenticeship program to train wetland scientists, then it is appropriate for us to require a bachelor's degree. Next slide. I want to reiterate that we are aware that this change may mean that some people will no longer meet the definition of qualified professional, and that is why we added a clause in the criteria that says anyone who has submitted wetland reports to us prior to January 1st may continue to do so. It will continue to be third-party review as we have used in the past. We are not trying to disqualify anyone who's worked with Lewis County in the past, right? We want to keep people working for the county who've worked for the county. But we do need to raise the bar so that we are more likely to get reports that are accurate and meet the state and federal guidelines. Next slide. The other change to the criteria is to be clear that if someone repeatedly turns in reports with errors, we may disqualify them. It's not enough to simply have a degree and certifications. Staff need to receive accurate reports. Customers should not have to go through three to seven re-reviews at significant cost to them because their consultant didn't produce an accurate report that meets the state guidelines. That is the end of my presentation. I will turn it back over to Commissioner Corbin for questions.
Thank you, Mindy. All right, next is an opportunity for commissioners to ask questions of staff. This is different than discussion, which will come after a motion is made. Do any of the commissioners have any questions of Mindy at this time? Bob? I know.
Mindy, I was reading the letters today from, that had been submitted. And one of the points was interesting, and it was talking about somebody in a, that might come up through an engineering office and may have been in the field, working as a surveyor, you know, the routine, and has come up and learned a bunch of the skills. And the question was, how does that person break that ceiling? And I think you have an answer for it, but I thought it was a good question.
Yeah, we feel that it's important for people to have a bachelor's degree in a science field that is related to wetland delineations. So botany, hydrology, soil science, something that gives that baseline of scientific information.
So I guess, I'm sorry, Frank, I'm going to segue. It was, I think that, I don't know if it was a written answer, but it was more of the, it is oftentimes in engineering firms that they have employees that don't have qualifications, but they get looked at in civil engineering, PEs. And so I think that was the, I liked that, that that person was covered, is what I'm.
Oh, you're asking, because if you. Yeah, if you're in a consulting firm with someone who does have the qualification, you may, we may, we'll still accept your report. We assume, like in the case of an engineer, if you don't have a degree, you're not going to get an engineering stamp. You can't stamp it, but you can do the work, and your colleague can stamp it for you, right? So we don't expect that a consulting firm, that every single person in it who completes these reports would have, would meet these qualifications. The consulting firm itself needs to have people that meet the qualifications. Yeah, the assumption is that other staff are looking over that work, right? So we won't have to do third-party review because they are effectively doing that for themselves. Yeah.
Yeah, I have, well, there are two or three along the same lines. Who verifies that the people that submit these reports meet those qualifications?
They need, they need to self-verify. They need to provide their qualifications to us.
Do they do that before a review? Or do they have to do that in order?
Oftentimes, I see consultants providing those sort of as a resume attached to their report. It's usually an appendix to. It's just a list of qualifications that's, you know, appendix C of report.
And then it mentions continuing education credits. Is that just something that they keep track of, and the county can audit that if they need to?
Yep.
I guess that's what I got for now.
Okay.
Hey, good, good. Jeff? Do you have any questions?
Yeah, a couple.
Sorry, I didn't. Go ahead. Go ahead, Lauren.
Well, I got on the DOE website today to educate myself a little bit about how this works at the state of Washington. If I understood it correctly, they said that you don't have, by law in the state of Washington, you don't have to have any certification. Anybody can provide a wetland report. And that the, if I understood it right, the Corps of Engineers and the DOE then have to, I can't remember the word they use, but have to, do you have the final approval or something? Is that correct?
No, they don't have final approval of our wetland delineations that come in.
Do they have to review it? Or are they the ones that give the final?
No.
Nothing final?
No.
Okay, but I am correct that anybody.
We use.
In theory, if our rules allowed it, prepare a report.
Right, the state of Washington does not provide guidelines around qualified professional for wetlands. They do for many other things, but not for this one. So it is up to the local jurisdictions to decide.
Okay. And on the list that you provided of all of the jurisdictions that did require a BS or a BA, did we not find any that did not require one?
There are some that simply say a degree, and we did not take the time to reach out to them to ask if they would allow for that to be any degree or if they required a four-year.
Okay. So the ones that I turned into you, wasn't there some in there that said that for experience worked, they would qualify?
The only one in there that didn't specifically say a BA or a BS was Island County, but Island County still requires a professional certification. And again, I have not found a professional certification that doesn't require a BA or a BS.
Well, I did. I called the U Dub, and they do a professional certification, and they require a BA or a BS, but it can be basket weaving. It doesn't have to be science.
Right, which is, so that's why we listed the U Dub as one of the certifications that we would take. We listed three certifications that we would take.
But I'm saying that to get a certification from U Dub, the four-year degree that you need to get it can be in anything.
Okay, I can double-check that if that is the way that they work.
I'm just, you know, repeating what she said. That you do before you qualify for it, if you've taken basket weaving, you do have to then get 20 credits in some science-related. And most people do that prior because it's very competitive. She says it's one of the certifications that sell out. It's the fastest one. And they've got waiting lists because everybody is interested in getting these, which I thought was interesting because my research online said in 2023, you could expect to make somewhere in the high $80,000, you know, to be a wetland specialist, which in 2023 would be good, and I'm sure it would be more now. So I can see why people might be interested. But anyway, I did think it interesting that if you got a certification from U Dub, you did not have to have the Bachelor of Science, so.
Right, but you still have to have a bachelor's degree.
Yeah, I know, but who cares? I mean, who cares if it's just.
I guess that was the concern I had heard from you guys was requiring a four-year university degree at that cost and that, you know.
Right.
Right, and so was there something that was available that didn't require a four-year degree? There was something less than, and I have not been able to find that. There was something less than, and I have not been able to find that.
Okay.
So the the university certifications still require four-year degrees associated with them.
Well, in the the letter from, let's see, one of these letters, I thought she said that she got her certification from somebody down south, I think. Oh, okay. And I was wondering what kind of a degree maybe she had to get prior to that.
So we could ask her to come up and clarify during testimony because she is here today.
The only reason I was wondering is, is there a certification program that does not require a four-year degree? That that was just what I, because the UW requiring it, but it not having to be anything in science is one thing, but now, if I understand you right, you're proposing that we now say the four-year degree has to be in science, other, science-related, and a certification? Is that correct?
That is.
Or and/or?
No, that's what we're trying to go for. We would like people to have basic education in a science field and a certification so that we feel like they're going to be able to come in and provide the accurate reports.
And so then if you get in a situation that you're describing that we're in now where there has been some lack of consistency in that you would have to review the reports more than once, if the person had a four-year science degree and a certification and now we come into that problem, what are we going to do with them then?
So we will still do third-party review and we will still do re-reviews if the information is not accurate that comes in. And that's why we've added the clause that if that happens repeatedly, if we're getting inconsistent, wrong reports multiple times from somebody, we'll disqualify them.
And and so then speaking to the gentleman, would you describe a little bit how that might work?
Sure. The disqualification has to be documented and a letter has to be provided and then it can be appealed to the hearings examiner if they feel that we are making an arbitrary decision rather than a decision based on the facts. And the hearing examiner will then make that decision. It can then be appealed to the state if the if the appellate feels that the hearing examiner is wrong. So we provide, if, when we're going to do that, we're going to provide a significant amount of documentation supporting our decision-making. It will not be an arbitrary decision.
And so it wouldn't be tied to a wetland application? It would be just specific, specifically addressed to that one situation that that one specialist was not adequate?
It would likely be multiple wetland reports that have come in with errors that we've documented with that one person where they are consistently turning in poor reports.
Well, why don't we just do that now and forget all the rest of the stuff?
We don't want to get to that point. Every single time we get a report that comes in with bad information, we have to go through re-reviews and re-reviews costs money to the customers. They have to pay their consultants to do more hours of work and it takes more staff time for us to then re-review that report again. If we send it off to third-party, we are now hiring a third-party because we cannot continue to use ecology. That's a fee that's going to be passed on to the customers. We need reports to come in accurate the first time. So we're trying to get to that point where we feel like people have a baseline of understanding, a base certification, and we will hopefully then get reports that are not going through three to seven re-reviews.
Well, I understand that. I just, I just think that it's likely that we could end up in the same situation with with the more qualified person.
I don't doubt that we may still have that same issue coming through. And if it, if we still have somebody who's completely qualified and meets all the qualifications and is turning in poor reports repeatedly, we will disqualify them.
What constitutes a bad report?
Yeah.
Yeah, multiple errors, inaccurate information, every single site is different. We will document those and and then, and then produce a disqualification letter.
Well, I I understand that you, you know, we don't, not you, but we don't want reports going back and back and back because they're not done correctly, but there, I don't think there's anything we're doing here that's going to save the customer any money.
I think that.
By the time they've got a four-year degree and a certification and.
I don't agree because the reports that we're only doing one review on, for the most part here, people are meeting the qualifications that we've just written in there. The reports that we're getting are typically from people who are not meeting these new minimum qualifications. So we do feel that this will help us to have more accurate information coming in.
The proper timing, excuse me.
I have a whole bunch of questions and I'm not exactly sure. Take two. I'm not exactly sure where to start. The beginning here, do, does a city have to have the same wetland reports, for example?
City is an entirely different jurisdiction with their own rules. We are only concerned with the county.
Okay, so that'd be rural areas mainly. There's some RD D twenties and fives and stuff, but it's outside the city limits.
Correct.
Okay. I started this review a very long time ago and when we started, I could go up to the counter and fill out a checklist and and that was fine. It was just licensed architect, that qualified, that was fine. I was representing my clients. Now, I'm a little concerned that these ultra-qualified people are not necessarily representing the developer and the clients that are paying the bill. Are they a little more biased towards the the county codes and requirements? I mean, how do we protect against that? There's obviously a sense that that's what's happening, so.
I don't, I don't guess I don't understand what you're saying. We have codes and we have qual, and guidelines that people have to meet, period. That's what you have to do.
Let me take another way. You know, I simply filled out a checklist. Now we have aerial photographs and we have studies upon studies. The land either is or is not a wetland, you know, and we document all the other types of land. Somebody buys a piece of land, then they have to hire a specialist to prove that they can develop on it. And it seems a little backwards to me.
This is what we have to do in order to meet the state and federal guidelines. We, if there's a wetland on the site, we have to have the wetland information and we want it to be produced by a qualified professional.
Right, but why don't we have that anyway? I mean, it won't be very long.
We don't have the information on every single site. It is all remote data. There is not wetland delineations on sites. It has to be done on a case-by-case basis.
A whole lot of it's on your webpage. I mean, you can just.
It's remote data. It is not site-specific.
I know it's remote.
And anybody who goes out and does delineations will tell you that it is, that the mapping we have is not accurate. It's only an indication that there may be wetlands on the site. It has to be done on a site-by-site basis.
I really don't like the kind of the balance of this, I guess. If you've ever tried to build something, you'd understand what I'm talking about. It's just inherently unfair in.
So I understand what you're saying, but we're not going to repeal our wetland requirements because we have to have them. So we have to have these reports in order to meet the state rules. So what we're talking about is who should prepare them. And we've proposed that a qualified professional who meets these minimum qualifications is who should prepare them.
Hey, thank you, Jeff. We move on to Jason. He's had his hand up for a while. Thank you, Jason.
All right. So I guess one of the things I'm wondering, I, just to start off, I 100% understand why we need to have these things and I'm fully on board with having the requirements and I realize you get crappy work and we need to mitigate that. So all that to say, I still, I still don't like that we are, just because there are others jurisdictions or most, even most, that do require the degree, that we don't have any other way for somebody to get to this point without going through a degree program, especially since, and I appreciate Lori doing all that research. That was really helpful, especially since it's not absolutely required. So I get that we need to do something, so I'm not disputing that. Is there no way that we can have some sort of, that we can add something? I don't think we should take anything off, but if we, if you can add something to, you know, if somebody has, I mean, if it's 15 years' experience, I mean, you could make it a long time. You could make it, you know, if they hand in 100 good reports to us that are stamped through their office, you know, just some kind of way where somebody through just doing good work for an extended period of time would be able to find their way onto the qualified list? And maybe that's a longer route than going through school and all that stuff, but at least there's some kind of pathway. I just, I don't know that I can get behind just totally excluding that for every possible, I mean, for that to be the only, only way. I just, I really don't like that. And if we have the latitude to do it or to do something, I feel like we should, we should make some sort of attempt to allow, even if it seems like a lot, just to have some sort of pathway for somebody that maybe doesn't want to, not going to be able to drive up to Seattle every day or move up there to do something. Maybe somebody that's trying to change careers later in life and can't uproot their whole family to go to Seattle or can't bear the cost and already has been working somewhere for 15, 20 years and wants to be able to actually be the owner of their work instead of being an employee for eternity. I just don't want to pigeonhole people into that, especially if we're not forced to. I mean, we're forced to do a lot of crap we don't like around here and I feel like this is one of those times where we don't actually have to do that. And so if there's some kind of way we could provide a pathway, because I'm just really uncomfortable in general with continuing to tell everybody who wants to work in the world that they have to go through a university in order to be able to work is is an idea that I'm not at all comfortable with and I probably will never get behind. And, but I I fully understand the, the, the problem and I agree with it. I just think that.
Jason?
So the, I agree with the diagnosis. I just don't agree with the prescription.
So I, I think I hear you. And so the only way I see around that is to set a large number of years that someone has to practice and that a qualified professional has to stamp their work for all those years.
Yeah, I'm 100% for something like that.
So we could certainly write in there that, you know, we, if you do work in our county for, for, you know, five, 10 years and you turn in this number of reports and they're always stamped by a qualified professional and we see no errors in them, then, I mean, that's a long, another add to the code that we could put in there. And it would place the burden on then of them and the third-party that they have signing those. But if that, you know, if that is really where you want us to go, so we add that to the code, we, we, I can, I can type a mo, a motion that that you can make to add that in if that's what you want.
I just, I mean, I would, I would be in favor of it, adding that to what we're doing just because I, I don't.
So let me do.
I don't intend to consequence of pigeonholing everybody forever.
So let me just, let me do just a order process thing really quick. So we've moved past questions of me to proposals for how to change the code, right? So we were in questions, Jason, and I'm not, I'm not trying to poo-poo what you said.
Sure, no, that's fine. Well, yeah, I guess my, my, my question was like, is there, is there some kind of reasonable pathway? I mean, I don't, I don't want to get ridiculous, but is there some kind of reasonable pathway?
I will type up.
And that's, I guess that's my question.
Yeah, I will type up another option that you guys and send it over to Megan to throw up on the screen for another type of motion that you guys can entertain after we get the testimony.
Yeah, the other thing I was curious about is, do we have any definitive language in as far as how many rejected reports it takes to result in disqualification?
No, because sometimes errors are very, very egregious and you get a few of those reports and that's pretty awful. And sometimes it's a whole bunch of small errors over a very long period of time. So no, it is difficult to quantify anything like that. And that is why we amass the documentation and it can be appealed.
So, and I, I'm assuming I know that, I just, again, it's another one of those things I'm a little uncomfortable with just because, you know, when, when we're out there building, a lot of the stuff we talk about in here is like, it's reasonable around a table, but then it gets out into practice and things tend to get a lot different than what we imagine them to be in kind of this sterile intellectual environment. And so I'm a, I'm a little concerned about, you know, is that person going to have any idea that they're getting close or, you know, are they going to be getting warning letters? You know, how, how can they? I mean, I get if somebody's doing bad work all the time, that they're probably not going to change it, but.
I kind of suspect if you're into three or four re-reviews on your report, you might want to consider that a warning.
So, so is there, I know.
You know, that was a little snarky, but you would think.
No, and I hear you.
That many times.
Yeah, and I hear you. But I mean, is there just a way to make, again, I just, I don't like some of the ambiguity on this because this is, this is people's way of making money potentially. And so I'm kind of in favor of having a lot more. I, I just, you know, again, I'm a little uncomfortable with whoever, I mean, we don't know if we're going to get to have you around forever. We don't know who we're going to get to have around forever and you get one of the wrong kind of people in place and a lot of vague language and things can get harried pretty quick. So I guess that's my concern.
Thank you, Jason. Gretchen, do you have anything? Can't hear you, Gretchen, if you're talking, I can't see if your lips are moving. You're still muted.
There we go.
Now I can hear you. Go ahead.
Okay. I don't have anything new that, that people haven't already said. I'll wait for the discussion, I guess, to, to speak more about the, our consensus or how we're going to be voting, but I don't have any specific questions.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, Jeff and then Bob, please.
Yeah, well, regarding Jason, I tend to agree with this. The other professions in the building industry also have pathways, you know, outside of college and we could take advice or follow some of those other pathways, pathways. Architectural, for example, has, you know, X number of years of experience under a licensed professional and then you take an exam. The wetland could be very similar to that. I'm sure the electricians have, have a similar pathway. This isn't something new. I'm not sure why we need to be, you know, recreating things here.
Thank you, Jeff. Bob?
I was going to say, this is normally where I weigh in and tell you all my opinions about things, but I learned the first year on council that this is not when I do that, that this was questions. Did I have any questions for Mindy? And I don't have any questions, but I intend to weigh in here in a few minutes.
Hey, thank you, Roger. Anything else?
No questions.
Lori? Okay, one more time, Jason, anything else? I didn't mean to cut you off.
Nope, no, that's, those are the only two things I had kind of questions about.
Okay, and Gretchen, you were pretty decided on your last comment, so I won't ask you again. All right. I don't have any questions myself. I usually always try to make sure that I go last as the chair, but I'm okay with the general concept that you've outlined here in this proposed ordinance change or code change. I am, however, always in favor of providing, like Jason, I think eloquently said. like Jason, I think eloquently said, alternate means, you know, of achieving the same thing. When I was in the federal government and in the Navy, there were two ways to achieve a goal. There was from the ground up, working your way up the long ladder. And then there was the instant route, albeit expensive, go to college, get your certificate and boom. You know, you are now dubbed whatever, you know? And I found, working in the Navy, that a lot of the young officers that I worked for, that I had to salute, that I had to take orders from, weren't exactly the sharpest hacks in the box. And, but yet you talk to a, you know, a master chief petty officer or a senior chief petty officer, even a chief petty officer, somebody that's been around fifteen, twenty years, many times have far and above greater skills and qualifications because their education is rooted in, you know, the bedrock of reality, of where the work is actually done. One of the things that I found very frustrating in the federal government was, was the fact that we would have these big wigs at the top, and I'm not saying that's the case here, but I'm using this as an analogy. But we'd have the big wigs, you know, pontificating orders for us lowly staff. But then once they realized, you know, how much it was affecting the workers or the boots on the ground, it was unrealistic, the way it was implemented. And so what I'd like to, for us to consider is to have a dual track, you know, where we have the professional route, okay, if you want to call it that, the educated, the, you know, let's, let's, let's bless them, you know, in their new role after graduation. And then we also find a way to really honor those who have come up through the ranks, done the hard work. You know, they've, they've shoveled a lot of ditches before they could get to the next level on their job and eventually they've learned everything that needs to be done. Now, I'm also a fan of making sure that if people are submitting bad work, you know, that there is a means to credibly and objectively document that so that they can be eliminated from future work, at least for a period of time, if, if not permanently, depending on the severity. You know, I know it's, it's extra work on staff, but, you know, in the interest of facilitating more people in the industry doing this kind of work, I think a dual career track would preserve the great experience that we have even more so. Rather than just going just towards the highly educated. And again, I'm not criticizing the highly educated. But, and I think that you've attempted to do that in what I've read here and all of the material that you sent us in which there's a, a five-year period of time, I think I read, where, you know, the person could continue doing this work as long as a coworker who is certified and has the necessary stamp can review the work, you know, at, at the company. So, you know, how can we better address the notion of a two-pronged approach to solving this problem?
So I have typed up another motion for you to consider, but I think we should wait until after testimony and then get into the discussion and, and looking at options because we haven't yet heard from the testifiers.
Yeah, okay, okay. All right. Well, that basically sums up what I had prepared.
Hey Frank, I have one more question.
Oh, sure.
I, I hope that if we have testimony tonight, I would love to hear basically what they are suggesting. Because I'm assuming they're in the field. So what are they suggesting?
And I also wanted to make mention then, since we're gonna go into that part of, of this process called oral testimony, is those of you who have come prepared to make a statement, I'd like for you to, for one, one thing, be concise and get your main points out first. And if you run out of time, then hopefully, you know, you will have said, you know, the, the main points that you really want to say. Secondly, is if you're, if you're with somebody who doesn't want to make a statement, but perhaps maybe, you know, they would be willing to give you their three minutes. I would like to give each person a chance to do that here. Again, each person's given three minutes to provide public testimony, or excuse me, oral testimony. And then if somebody else would like to give you their three minutes, they can do that. And we can do that up to once, which means the maximum that a person could speak would be six minutes. Last time, last meeting, we had someone who went over their three minutes. I gave them an extra minute. But in oral testimony, it's not quite as generous, you know, to give extra time. But this is one way that you can take extra time. So if, if one of you wants to donate your time to a speaker, that can happen once. Okay? And each person then who's given time can speak for a maximum of six minutes. All right. So we're gonna go ahead and open oral testimony. Staff, would you like your opening remarks and presentation to be added to the testimony? Or to the record? Okay. All right. Before we begin public testimony, just remember the, the things that I have outlined already. Testimony will begin with those who notified staff in advance that they wish to testify. Next, we'll call on those who have signed up at the lectern in the room and finally those who have their hands raised in Zoom. All right. So Mindy, do we have anybody who has notified us in advance that they want to provide testimony?
We are gonna begin with those who have signed up in the room.
Okay.
So I'll go ahead and give my instructions again. Each person will have three minutes to provide your testimony. Once you begin speaking, I will start the timer, which will be displayed on the screen. Please begin by providing your full name. And we will begin with Ronald Braun.
Thank you. I think that when you take a look at county government or city government, whatever, we're all supposed to do the same stuff. We're supposed to provide a service to the customer. As a reviewer for, gosh, twenty years of the twenty-one years I was in service for city government, we were told frequently that our job is to do the reviews, as many reviews as possible in order to get the job done. We were not to discriminate against any of the applicants about the nature of the reviews, the quality of the reviews or whatever. We were just to, you know, just the facts, ma'am. You give us what we want and then we give you what you want. And we weren't to have an attitude about it. We weren't to be angry about it. We weren't to be upset about it. We weren't to complain about how many times the reviews happened. We loved it when we could only do one review. I can tell you that. I went through thousands of reviews during my period of time. We're not to care about how many reviews it is. We're not to care about how much it costs the applicant. That's not our charge. Our charge is to get the review done. So, you know, when you hear about, gosh, we don't want to do reviews seven times. Well, that's what your job is. Your job is to get there to the point where your review is done, period. Not to get angry about it. You're just gonna get that review done. Now let's talk about the qualifications. Last time that I was here, you all were in agreement about having a minimum cert of wetlands. You all agreed on it. Yet when I looked at your monitor here, it changed. I don't know why it changed, but it did. So, you know, we're, we're supposed to do a service to the public. We're not supposed to be angry at them, not supposed to, you know, go beyond what, what there is. And by the way, I did work for one of the jurisdictions that was on that list. And we didn't require everyone to have certifications like that. That was a call from the department director of community services. So it was a little bit, it could be accurate now, but at the time it wasn't accurate. Okay? Generally speaking, when we did reviews, most of those platted lots were already legal lots. There wasn't anything really to talk about. Everything was all said and done at that period of time. Anything that happened after that usually was brought into like multifamily or commercial where they're gonna be doing CIPA. In which case this is all, you know, okay, so when you're talking about single family, this is small beans. Shouldn't be worried about it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Next, we have Nathan Rieger.
I'm not a, I'm not a very good public speaker, but I'll give it my best shot.
Could you please introduce yourself and, and state?
My name is Nathan Rieger. I'm co-owner of environmental design. We do a lot of work in this county. So part of what I'm here to talk about now is your definition of a qualified professional revolves a lot, a lot around having a four-year degree. Well, part of the problem with a four-year degree is a lot of four-year degrees are just a lot of fluff and buff. And there's a lot of two-year degrees out there that if you strip down those extracurricular courses can be consolidated down into less than four years. My partner has two, two-year degrees. There's also programs out there you guys were asking about. Portland State University offers a wetland program in correlation with the Army Corps of Engineers that has a certification program that you do not have to have a bachelor's. You don't have to have any degree. It states right on their website. But part of that is it's all about education. So if you could prove your education, why should you have to have a four-year degree when you can get those same courses in a two-year degree? Or why even require a degree, period? If you can show transcripts that you've taken classes, if you've taken environmental heavy courses, why, why require a degree if you don't need PE or philosophy or these other extracurricular courses that are involved in getting that degree? A degree with a bunch of classes with basket weaving and philosophy and mathematics, those aren't gonna help determine a, a wetland. So if you strip out those extra classes, you can consolidate a degree down into more of a technical degree, which would be a two-year degree, or even just the practical courses involved with environmental sciences. If you can show that you've taken those classes, why require a degree, period? Also, I'd like to state, in terms of with the review process, we work in multiple jurisdictions. And in most of those jurisdictions, since wetlands are so prospective, not every reviewer is going to agree with the said professional. And it may require more than one review, maybe more than two reviews. There's no set number of reviews depending upon the complexity of the site. You come to common ground through the review process. And like Ron said, it takes as many reviews as it takes. Part of what we've seen in this county is a change in staff where you have new green staff that don't completely understand the process or even what they're looking at. Part of that adds to the number of reviews.
Three minutes, please wrap up your comments. Okay, that's everybody who has signed up in the room. Is there anybody on Zoom that would like to provide testimony? Okay, I see Jesse Simmons. I'm gonna go ahead and share the timer on the screen so you can see that. And go ahead and begin whenever you're ready.
Sorry, I was fixing my camera. Hey, Jesse Simmons here from Olympia Master Builders. We represent about five hundred or so members in the home building industry. I wasn't gonna chime in, but I just wanted to express some, some suggestions. We do believe there should be a minimum standard everywhere for, you know, any of these things. They're professional jobs. They're profession, you know, you do professional reviews, professional work. Caveat to that, I've sat here while we were, while we were all talking and I've done a little bit of research and every county that I've looked at does in fact have an alternative to the degree requirement they have. And it's typically about four years of experience. And that was about four or five counties that I did find. So I would suggest that we do include a, an alternative, like an in lieu of a bachelor's degree. You can have so much experience. I think that would open it up to more people, kind of drive down the inequities and the inherent inequities in the policy. And so I think that would be a good addition. And then, and then also, I do believe that there is a, a requirement in the suggested policy to be a member of a, a specific organization. And I would just add to that fact that that's a membership organization, kind of like us, OMB, that doesn't necessarily make you a qualified professional. We like, we like the work and we think our, our, our members are really good builders, really, really professional builders. But on the other side of that, it is a paid membership and you can become a member of an organization just by paying money. And so I don't think that that should be a standard to, you know, like a minimum qualification. Outside of that, I would also warn that there is a potential legal objection on the horizon. The Supreme Court of the United States has ruled on wetlands and they have redefined wetlands as a, it has to be connected to a main body of water, what they call the waters of the United States. Of course, the Department of Ecology came out the next day after that ruling and said that we don't have waters in the United States. We have waters of the state. So we will see how that goes. But just so that that's on your peripheral, that is in the future, the Supreme Court has ruled differently than what Washington State defines as wetlands. That's all I got. Thank you for your time and thank you commissioners. Also, I would add to that, the one commissioner that's a former military service member, I had much the same experience as him. A degree did not necessarily mean that that person was, was very qualified. Oh, one more. I just had one more addition. I do, I would like to see a requirement for corrective training instead of an outright disqualification to begin with. If, if there's a way that that can be worked into the policy, at least that person would have a, a chance to get themselves right with the county. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Simmons. Okay, is there anybody else? Anybody else in the room who'd like to provide oral testimony? Please, sir, introduce yourself and your affiliation.
I'm Mark Hayes. I'm, I'm a retired forester from Department of Natural Resources.
Your name, please?
Mark Hayes.
Thank you.
And I did send some comments. And I agree with what you said, Frank. Growing up with the DNR, I have a two-year degree, four-year degree, foresters would come out. Guess who trained them to do forestry? You know, it was us in the field, you know, teaching the, the four-year guys. And, and I think that the degree is not a big deal when you've got a lot more experience. I think you need a base background, whether it be a two-year degree in environmental studies, you know, soils, wildlife, whatever, you know, I mean, just natural resource type management. So that's, that's one part I had. The other part that we, that hasn't been brought up that I would like to say is, as being a reviewer of permits, because I did forest practice permits for years. And when we went out on site, we may not see exactly what the other person saw. So we'd do like an ID team if we felt it was bad. And you get all these scientists there and we all had different perspectives. So each person's gonna look at it a little different and they might not be right in your eyes, but they're right on the ground, you know? And it's, it's, it's a tolerable means there, but you don't, you agree to disagree at that point. Is nobody's, it's, it's, it's natural resources. Things are gonna change. And it's all fluid, but in its interpretation. So I may not feel it's a wetland and you may feel it's a wetland. We can talk about that and adjust the buffer. But, you know, one way or the other, it's, it's really ambiguous. What is the line to stop something like that? So, I think when you look at all the scientists, you know, anything we do, scientists review other scientists' work. And they always come up with a little more, a little difference. So I think we just need to look at it as a whole perspective of opinions, because it is opinions. And if the people that are doing the permitting aren't getting out on the ground to actually look at it, they're using GIS and maps, you gotta go out and ground truth everything out there before you can, those are just a baseline thing to give you ideas. Setting up a timber sale, we took a big block of timber. We'd look at it and say, this is what we're gonna log. And we get out there and we go, oh, shoot, there's a stream here. Or there's, oh, there's an old mine or a heritage site. And you wouldn't see that on a photo or a map. But once you got out there and walked it, so in, in a public agency, you have to get out and walk around and see that site completely before you can make that determination. So it's not just a rubber stamp and permit thing in the office and that's what it And that's what it kind of here, this is, I can do one review real quick in the office and be done with this one, or I might have to go and field review it. So that's where I'm at. Thank you.
Thank you. One last chance, anybody, sir?
Uh, my name's Nate Carpenter. I wasn't planning on speaking today just because I really don't have a dog in this fight. Um, I'm not on either side, but just listening. Um, I had some questions and maybe some questions for the board. Um, when it comes to like disqualifying people, it seems more of like, I have more questions about like what the disqualification process would be, just like, uh, Board Member Al said, but then also what's the length of that? It was kind of ambiguous. Is that permanent or is there a way to, like Mr. Simmons said, which I agree with, a way to redeem that qualification to be considered somebody that could support documents to the county? Um, the other question I had was what percentage of the re-reviews would this change actually resolve? If it's a small percentage and there's continuing re-reviews, this seems like an unnecessary change. So I would also encourage the board to try and make small incremental changes towards a potential need to a four-year degree instead of just immediately going to a four-year degree. Cause if the percentage of re-reviews and issues aren't completely resolved, it seems like an unnecessary change. Um, and then my last just comment, I guess, is that, you know, people are humans and mistakes will be made. Um, if this isn't going to solve all the mistakes that are going to be made, it kind of seems unnecessary to be really exclusionary instead of inclusionary to people that are working here in the county. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right. Oral testimony is now closed on the definition of qualified professional. So now is the time for additional questions from commissioners for staff based on testimony that we've heard. This is different than deliberations, which comes after a motion is made. Are there any questions for staff based on the testimony we've heard, just based on the testimony that we've heard? I'm seeing a bunch of heads shaking no. Jason, Gretchen, anything?
Um, I will just, um, and again, you know, this is kind of akin to what I was saying before, but, um, I guess I, I'm, I'm wondering if these are all, I mean, they're, first of all, I mean, appreciate everybody speaking. That's so helpful to have everybody there and I, uh, we don't get, often get this much engagement and I, I really appreciate everybody doing it, uh, because it does offer so much depth to the conversation we're having. But my question is, is it, I mean, I, I guess I know it is, but is it feasible for us to put in a lot more detail into this thing? Like, you know, timeframes that you, you may be barred from submitting new work, um, some sort of progressive scale. I really, uh, like the idea of, of some sort of a retraining, um, way to, uh, to get back into the good graces. Are those, are those things that are manageable, you know, to do? Or I guess the other thing that I wonder is if, if we, if we detail this thing to the level that I think it probably deserves, is that creating more work than it's, um, alleviating from staff?
Um, so I think at this point, my recommendation to the commission would be to, um, entertain a motion that includes additional information in that motion that you would like the Board of County Commissioners to consider. And then I would ask that the commission, maybe one of you or two of you, agree to write the letter of transmittal. So typically I do the letter of transmittal and someone signs it. Um, but in this case, I think it might be more useful for the commissioners, again, maybe one or two of you to get together and produce the letter of transmittal that then would come back to the commission before signature. And then we would take this forward to the Board of County Commissioners for consideration with all of your input included into it. So I think that would be my recommendation at this point. Um, so that way, Jason, if you want to get into a little bit of that detail, if another commissioner wants to work with you on it, you can do that. So you're effectively writing a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners. Does that make sense?
Yeah, uh, yeah, absolutely. Um, and so to my second question, just kind of wondering what your personal take is on that? Do you, do you think like getting this thing fully fleshed out with all these kinds of things to find, does that put more, more work on your guys' table to actually manage that, that kind of process than you currently are by re-reviewing? I, I just, I don't want to, I don't want to get this thing to the point where, um, we think it's good and then that actually makes it worse for you than, than had we done nothing.
So a lot of what you guys are talking about actually does not belong in a code. It belongs in policy associated with code. So I think many of you know that we have code and then we have code interpretation policy as signed, um, because you, you can't, you can't write enough code ever to get to everything. Um, so it's usually a combination of code and policy. I think what is necessary here is, um, you as a commission to write what you think is important to be captured here in your own words, rather than, uh, like we do in other circumstances where I write it for you. And then we would take that forward to the Board of County Commissioners and have a conversation with them about what goes in a code and what they'd like to see in a policy.
Mindy, I have a question. What, what is our policy now? Have you given this to us and I forget? Like what is our code now?
The, the code is in front of you with the underlined strike through.
So that's, that's what it says now?
So what you always get in your staff report when we're doing a code change is code that has strike through for language to be removed and underline for language to be added and commentary on the opposite page to explain it. So you have the current code with the proposed changes in it. So I have typed up, um, a motion that we could ask Megan to put on the screen if you'd like to consider it.
No, I, we, I think we need to do a little more discussion Frank.
Well, this is questions. The discussion should actually come after a motion.
After the motion?
Because then if you don't like the motion, you can just say no and redo a motion.
Okay.
You can always, you do as many motions as you want. So if you have an emotion in a second and you discussed, you're like, actually no, then everybody votes no and we get to get another motion on the table.
Okay.
I am, I, I don't, I'm not trying to rush you. I just want to remind you that we have a whole nother 45-minute presentation to do tonight. So that's why I'm giving you this other option. If you guys can get together and put together a letter of transmittal in your own words and bring it back for you guys to have a consideration on before that goes to the Board of County Commissioners.
Jeff, go ahead.
Am I allowed to ask a question now?
Of course.
Okay.
That's what this.
This is, this is the section for that.
It seems to me that we're trying to reinvent the wheel here. The six of us are deciding on this. What are the industry standards?
So we've done our, our research of this and we believe that most counties are requiring a bachelor's degree for wetland delineations and stream assessment.
Not counties, industry.
I, I guess I don't know what you mean by that. Our industry is what the other counties and cities are requiring for this work.
No, the industries of the people writing the reports. What are their standards? When I came out of architecture school, I knew exactly what I had to do.
There aren't any state standards for us to look to in this case.
Well, why aren't we starting there? You know, the six of us can come up, or seven of us can, can up with all kinds of ideas. So why?
I mean, I would invite anybody to work with the state to try and come up with state standards that then all the jurisdictions don't have to write our own rules. That would be fantastic. I would much rather rely on state standards than our own standards. They haven't done that. So this is where we're at.
So do you have a, a motion that she wants us to look at?
Yeah, let's, if, if there's no other questions, let's look at the motion.
Let's see what, she, she's kind of.
I put it, I put an optional motion in the, um, folder that you can pull up. It's just a Word document. And again, any, uh, optional motion I throw up there is just something for you guys to consider. You certainly can change words in any way you want to. Um, this was just trying to capture the sentiment of what I heard from, um, from Jason and from the testifiers. You know, pull up the presentation with the other two options. I'm going to bounce around the greens.
My understanding is I get to speak my mind when we make a motion and I get to vote. And then I get to say without people debating it, it's not a question, I get to talk about where I'm at. So I wish we would have had this conversation last week, but we didn't. So, or two weeks ago. So I'm going to, uh, where are we at?
These are two motions that I had previously written based on last time's conversation. And then there's a third that's a different, it's a Word document that Megan can pull back up. And anybody's welcome to make a motion, any of these or come up with your own motion.
Okay, can I see the Word document again, please?
So where's the one that says we don't want to send it forward?
You could instead say I move to, oh, oh, so one of the things that I'm proposing here, because we did talk about this last time, was moving this forward to the Board of County Commissioners, because we have such a massive amount of body of work coming on the comp plan. You don't have to do, you don't have to do that if you guys are not willing to take a vote tonight, you don't have to. However, that does mean we're going to pull it back into the rest of these agendas. If you would like to make a motion to send a letter of transmittal recommending that the Board of County Commissioners do not make changes to the code, that they leave it exactly as is, you can also make that motion. So, uh, and I, again, it, I, the only reason why each one of these is the affirmative of moving it to the Board of County Commissioners is because last time we talked about how full your docket is and not holding this here, but rather moving it to the board to make a decision.
Some point I have to get to a spot where I can talk. So I.
I would say, so what I would say Bob is pick one of these that you're most comfortable with, make that motion. And then that way, and then somebody needs to second it for point of discussion and then you have the discussion.
I'd make a motion that we approve a transmittal letter that goes to the Board of County Commissioners that does not have a four-year requirement, but however, has a defined, no, de- defined competency level. All right, now you get my speech. Can I get my speech before we vote or do we need to vote on?
Just a second and then it goes full into deliberation.
Yeah.
I'll second it.
So here's my point to the crowd here, and I said it last week, I don't know, I meet all the requirements to turn in wetland reports in Lewis County. However, the last two I turned in, I could not get through Department of Ecology. So it cost my customer probably three to four months for me to get that through, th- through Ecology. And so this doesn't fix any of that, right? I already got all this. You can't do anything to me because I got the requirements, but I'm not producing a quality product. I happen to have my run-in with the city. They're not as sophisticated at the, as the county. Had I had my run-in with the county, Preston and I would have talked it through and he would have told me, you're wrong, Bob, you must fix it. You need to go buy the software and fix it. So I'm more, uh, you know, I know the people that turn them in, I read the reports. I think it's more about, you know, if you don't want to have a four-year degree, that's fine. But when you turn in three of them in a row that don't get through, then you get, somehow you get your hand slapped. Somehow we got to make this so that it costs money. Because it's the right thing to do, to do this professionally. This is a profession. This isn't something you just wing. And, and, yeah, I've heard a lot of stuff tonight that's not true. It's not true. And I'm just saying, this is not bad. It needs to happen because I can't get them through and they're not right. It's clearly defined on the Washington website, Department of Ecology, when you do the wetland scoring, what you need to turn in. And if you don't turn it in, it's not good, right? But I got all the qualifications, I just argued harder. Some point that doesn't work, doesn't work. So I'm good with getting a requirement out of there, the four-year degree. It's, you're right, doesn't matter. I got one, I can't write one. So if you don't want that, then put what you want in there and be honest about it. If you can't get one through Ecology three times, then you need to do something. Anyway, there, now you've heard. Okay, anyone else?
Lori?
I agree with that. I, I, I agree with that, but what is the, do you have any idea what you could use to measure competency other than historical data that the person has, is able to turn in a report and get it through every time? You know, some, some people say that that doesn't always work, but what would be, do you have any idea? Cause I don't have any idea.
Clearly defined. Thank you Commissioner for asking that question. This is not a mystery. The wetland report is clearly defined which documents you need to include in your report. And you include those documents to get the wetland score. That's this whole thing with buffers you got to deal with. The delineation arguments I hear people talk about, you don't really know where the wetland is. Yeah, that's, come on. You know, within 10 or 20 feet of where it is. And that's why we delineate. We delineate a spot over there and a spot here so we can figure it out. And, but it gets really technical. I'm going to, I got a sidebar. So I'm sitting the day at the county commissioner meeting and a man sits down next to me, he's my neighbor, owns a big piece of property, right down next to Interstate five. And I asked him, what are you doing here? He says, oh, we're here for something. Well, I thought he was here for that wetland piece of property, next to his piece of property. And he says, oh, I got somebody working on that. And I said, oh my goodness, I'm glad it's not me. Because, that's all I could think of, because it's complicated. It's right next to Interstate five. It is that whole thing about, is it a wetland? Is it not a wetland? How come he gets to do it? How come he doesn't get to do it? You don't just get up in the morning and figure that stuff out. It's complicated. So anyway, I digress. I, the, the answer to your question is it's not vague. There is a report. It states in, if you go to the 2014, and now I saw today, when I got on there, there's a, a modification. So I would have had to get on and learn the new modification, but it tells you the stuff you have to turn in. And we're, and some people aren't turning it in and then they get upset, you know, because we don't get it approved. Well, I used to get them approved, right? I never turned that report in. I never turned it in with that document, but there's this new standard, right? You, it's, country gets bigger and more professional. So anyway, they're asking for that standard. I've heard other people have had to deal with it too, and it's, yeah, it's hard.
Well, and it sounds like it, the fact that we will allow the people that have been turning the reports in already, uh, i- i- and, and some of those don't have a four-year degree. They just have, uh, I don't know if they've got some kind of a certificate or if they just have experience, but if we're willing to allow them to do it, it sounds like, you know, there's some form of competency, but what is it? You may have hit on it. You may have hit on it, that using the four-year, just because these counties did it, doesn't mean we have to.
Who's reviewing the reports?
Department of Ecology, is that right?
No, the staff review the report to make sure that all the pieces of the information are in there per our code and our state guidelines, and that it looks generally accurate. If there are any questions, that is when we start going into talking first with the person who produced it. Oftentimes, things can get easily worked out. That's still considered review one. We're not at a re-review. This is a moment of, we see some errors, we got some confusion. We're gonna talk to you first. We're gonna try and work out whatever it is. If, if there seems to be, you know, serious issues, then we'll send it off for a third-party review, someone who has technical experience. Right now, we're using Department of Ecology. We're hiring an on-call third party for that going into the future. That's when it starts going into the re-review circumstances, when we have additional things that are needed, usually missing or egregious, you know, errors in the information that, that we can't just work out between staff and the consultant.
Jason or Gretchen, before I jump in, do you have anything?
I do not have anything to add. And I also agree with pretty much everything Bob said.
Thanks. And Gretchen? Still can't hear you. You're still muted.
I'm just listening. I'm just all ears right now. I, I think what Bob said was, you know, essentially taking out the four-year language, but still having some kind of... So we're back to the, what is that? What is that measurement? That we can be sure that there's some kind of minimum standard? Have we, have we talked about what that? Is it our responsibility to talk about what that could be? Or can we just generally recommend that the county commissioners come up with that?
You can, yeah, you can do either, right? If you, if what you'd like to do is, is approve this and the letter of transmittal simply is this, that you're supportive of it, but you don't want the four-year degree, you want just other defined competency level? That can be your letter of transmittal. I can take that forward to the Board of County Commissioners and present that to them. And, and then they can either decide that they want to choose that or they could give me some more direction. Or if any of you want to, you can take over writing that letter of transmittal, and you can certainly provide additional information in it that then the whole commission would read and decide to sign before we submit that so that there was agreement about it. So it's really up to you how, how much you want to do in terms of putting together your letter of transmittal.
Let me take a shot at that.
Thank you for volunteering, Bob.
I've got a lot of friends, I don't know that they're my friends anymore, but I'll give them a call and we'll talk about this. And, you know, one of the speakers, again, this is a nice time because nobody gets to talk back at me. Nathan said he, he's not a very good speaker. He made some very good points tonight and actually changed my thinking.
Another thing that I forgot to bring up is Mr. Simmons that got on here kind of suggested that we not require affiliation with any, you know, and I, I had actually seen that on my research today, that you pay your dues and you're in. So it's not providing any quality requirement. So I agree with his suggestion that...
Well, there's...
If they're into it, they're gonna, they're gonna belong to clubs and stuff.
Well, I, I understand the importance. Personally, I understand the importance of belonging to professional associations because that's where you get a lot of your continuing education credits from. You know, you can, you can hear from industry experts, you know, on a fairly regular basis. So I see value in it, but to make it a requirement, you know, not necessarily. But I'm gonna go ahead and chime in with my thoughts. I'm not, I'm not against what Bob said, or anybody else for that matter. I think we're all kind of, you know, wrestling with this, you know, as best we can. But I still like the idea that I spoke about earlier, about a dual qualification path, you know, where you have, you know, the, the work your way up the ladder path, and then also the, you know, go get your education and you come out a certified, you know, brain surgeon. So, you know, and, and so that's what I would personally like to see us send to the county commissioners, is to have a dual path to certification. And then perhaps maybe even including, you know, I don't know. It doesn't necessarily need to go to the county commissioners. It's more of staff implementing, you know, the code, you know, which would be, you know, three strikes, you're out, or three strikes, you're on probation, you know. Three times on probation, you know, you're out. You know, you're not writing reports for the county anymore. Or some kind of, you know, standard by which the county can be consistent in how it deals with these contractors that are writing these reports. So that's kind of where I'm at.
Can I ask, is that, those are, are those both friendly amendments to potential friendly amendments to the motion that you would like Bob to consider? I mean, Lori, you had asked to remove the professional certification. Are you asking if that could be an amendment to Bob's?
Yes.
And then are you asking if another amendment is to...
I was gonna go back to the other word document motion that you typed on the fly down here.
Okay, well, this one's still on the board, so we have to take action on it first.
And I was gonna go to a vote, but I was probably gonna vote no, not because I'm against what Bob was saying, but I think it would be better served in the Third Amendment that we talked about, you know, which we would bring up. You know, if this one passes, then my point's a moot point. But if, if it fails, you know, then we can consider my, my option.
You know, in this, oh, excuse me, sir.
Yeah, go ahead.
In the spirit of Lewis County, you know, I sort of like the idea... I hear what you're saying, Frank. You talked about a dual track. My feeling is there is no certification, right? You gotta go to school. You gotta learn how to do, like I did, the week training. You gotta learn how to fill out the reports. And then you really need to mentor with somebody. This, this, I don't want to throw out everything they wrote because everything they wrote is not bad. I mean, like, the mentoring part is really helpful. You need to keep that in if we don't go to a program, right? To sort of direct, but I'm not into a certification. I'm into a metric. Are you writing the reports that can get through Ecology? And the first time it comes, now, I will say the communities I've dealt with don't have the sophistication that Lewis County does. When I turn one into Lewis County, I can get an answer and they'll, they might tell me, hey, that's not gonna make it, right? So...
So Bob, are you thinking that that kind of makes his idea moot? Because it doesn't matter whether you've been there for four years or you got the four-year. It just, here is the criteria to be able to write a report, turn it into Lewis County.
Have you, have you gone to some training? I have to think about it a little bit.
No, you don't have to answer right now. So are you accepting the amendment that Lori has proposed to additionally, in this motion, also remove the requirement for certification?
Yeah, that's a dumb, that's a dumb thing.
Okay, so Megan, do you want to add in, so does not have a four-year degree nor a professional certification? I just want to make sure that we know what we're voting on.
But has demonstrated a level of competency by filling out a report that has been approved and accepted to the Ecology standard.
Yeah, so I think we can leave it like this, and then you can put that into whatever, whatever, you know, you want to put into a transmittal letter since you've offered to write that transmittal letter. Jason's hand...
Remind me of that each time.
I am. Jason's hand is, I just want to make sure you saw that.
Do we get to vote, look at this before he gives it to him? Or is this just something he's doing?
Yeah, yeah. Bob's just gonna walk it in and nobody's gonna... No, you, you know, usually, we're kidding. Usually when we do transmittal letters, there's not this level, right? And so it's no big deal because we decided to turn it in. There have been times in the past where I brought you back a transmittal letter.
This time.
That's this time only. It'll be Bob bringing back a transmittal letter. Thank you, Bob. I'll give you the format.
Okay. Jason, go ahead.
Yeah, no, I guess a lot of the stuff I was gonna ask just sort of got answered. But yeah, I'm, I'm kind of, I guess, we, we talked about kind of opening up the avenues that people can come through. And I'm kind of okay with pretty much any of the ideas that have come forward. And, and what I wanted to ask Mindy is, do we need to define the punitive aspects of this in the code, or is that a policy?
I'm sorry, say that one more time.
So, so there's kind of the stick part of this.
Yeah.
Do we need to define that in there? Or is that, is that not for this conversation? Is that, is that a policy thing, was a...
I think, I think what would be best here would be to have a letter of transmittal that captures what you think should be in a code and what you think is important, right? So that more of the... So I think it'd be best to have sort of a, here are our sentiments as a commission after hearing testimony, and here's what we recommend the code amendments include or not include, right?
Yeah.
And then we can take that forward to the Board of County Commissioners for a discussion. All right? And I know I've said this in the past, I will say this again. It is also okay for you guys to nominate one of your members to come and present with me to the Board of County Commissioners. It doesn't just have to be me. So if, you know, if you also want to come and talk with them during, during the staff presentation, more than welcome to just, you know, pick a representative to come do that.
Okay, Bob?
I was just gonna say for our guests, I always like to remind myself and guests that we only make recommendations anyway to the Board of County Commissioners. So anything we say continues to go up there, and they could say, no, we want the four-year thing. Thanks, Mr. Russell. But, yeah, I just like to, we don't vote on anything. We just make recommendations.
Right, you vote to recommend.
Yeah, we vote to recommend.
And you either vote to recommend that they approve it or deny it. Those are your votes.
Again, you know, and, and I think I'm gonna go ahead and wind us down here, but to bring us back to, you know, the floor here. I'm, I'm still in favor of having the four-year degree requirement as one path to being able to provide these reports. And I'm also in favor of having the defined competency level. So I still maintain the dual, the dual, how, how do you, how should we say it? The dual...
I think we're clear on what you, what you mean. Yeah, either this or this.
Yeah, the dual path to give more options. You know, there are people that go to school for stuff like this. I don't think we should, you know, write into our code that it's not necessary for Lewis County. I mean, I think we should still have high standards and expectations. If it's an educational path, or if it's the qualification or, or, you know, come up the ranks path, you know, that both should have high standards and both should be options. You know, if a person, you know, can, can demonstrate with a four-year degree that they can do well on year five, you know, to do the work, then we shouldn't force everybody into a non-education path to, to qualify in five or six years of experience because that may not even be enough, you know? So, I don't know. I'm still in favor of the dual path, but the motion that's on the floor is the one that's on the screen. If the motioner and the second agree to the changes that have been made... So Bob, do you agree to the changes that have been made? It's, I'll read it. It's Commissioner Russell, Russell made a motion to approve a transmittal letter that goes to the Board of County Commissioners that does not have a four-year degree requirement nor a professional certification, but however, has a defined competency level. Okay? Is that, is that okay with you? Okay, scratching the word however, and then has a competency level.
I think we can just leave, we can scratch however, but has a defined competency level, and then you can put that in the transmittal.
Has a minimum defined competency level.
Yeah, that's, and you can come up with that in a transmittal letter.
So put, put minimum defined competency level there.
You're still, yeah.
Yeah.
And I don't remember who seconded it, if they will accept.
It was Roger. Roger, will you accept? Okay, all right. It's been moved and seconded to approve this motion that's on the floor, as has just been read. Is there any final discussion? Okay, seeing...
Can I say?
Yes, go ahead, Gretchen. I saw you getting ready to mute, unmute your phone.
Well, I, I wonder if there's a difference in required, like, in the, in the... How it's written right now, it says Bachelor of Science. But we just keep saying four-year degree, four-year degree. And one of the gentlemen said that for the, like, you just had to have, or Lori brought up that you just had to have a four-year degree, not a Bachelor of Science degree to get the UW certification. Would, would Bob or Roger be okay with just saying, "Scratch the Bachelor of Science"? Does that, is that worth talking about? Or should we just say, it's either a four-year degree or not? Or is it, are we gonna, because there is a difference between science and...
Yeah, they need to have two classes in the state of Washington.
To make it a science, Bachelor of Science?
To do a wetland report, you have to take in the class and you have to take in the wetland scoring system. So you have to have some education, but not a four-year degree. Am I right? Am I gang there? You gotta do those two things and you gotta write a report that passes, which some of us have had trouble with. Yeah, all right, we'll figure that out.
Well, a four-year degree is more, you know, is, is pretty general and all-encompassing. If you said, you know, a BS degree, then, you know, that would be pretty narrow. I don't know that it needs to be changed, but, okay. All right, no other discussion? All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call for the vote then. I will call your name and ask for your vote, and, and then at the end I will vote. Okay, all right. Commissioner Spogun, what is your vote on the motion?
I, I guess I vote yes.
Okay, Commissioner Russell?
Agree with requirement, but it does require professional training period.
I can't hear whoever's speaking.
Bob, that's...
I'm sorry.
You're changing your motion. I think we have to take a vote on this motion. So if you no longer want to vote for this, then don't, and then you'll come up with a new motion.
Yeah.
So also, you don't have to have all the details in this. You're going to write a letter. You're gonna work it out. If this, if this matches what you intend, and you're gonna work out some details in a transmittal letter, it should be fine.
We'll work it out.
That, that was my thought too. We're gonna, we're gonna vote on it.
I need some input.
Yeah.
I got some people that have written all these letters that need to provide some input.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, Commissioner Alves?
I guess I, I kind of feel the same. I, I would, I would vote yes only to get to the next part where we can provide the detail. But, you know, as it's written, it'd be a no for me, dog. But I think if we, yeah, this is so cumbersome. Yeah, I, I vote yes on the, on the pretense that we're gonna fill it out and then vote on the next thing or, or sign it. Is that how this is working?
Yeah, the letter of transmittal, we'll set a date for that to come back, and you guys will... Yeah, the letter of transmittal, we'll set a date for that to come back, and you guys will hash that out before deciding to sign it.
Now, this one is actually is actually defining now that there will not be a four year degree requirement period. So we're completely eliminating that and taking it off the table. So the transmittal letter then can't come back.
It could have, you could have one, Frank, as long as you prove competency. I think you could have one, but we're not requiring that you must have one.
Yeah, this says that the qualification doesn't have the four year degree requirement. Doesn't mean you don't have, if you have a four year degree, that
Yeah, if you have a four year science degree and go get a certification, you're probably going to meet the competency.
Well, and you still says that does not have a four year degree requirement. So I mean, if we wanted to soften that so that it could include it, you know, then I would agree with you that, you know, the details can be worked out in the transmittal letter. But the way it's written right now, we don't we we can't put forth a transmittal letter that has a four year degree requirement when the motion
So so for my vote.
You are right. So it so let me just be clear. When you're writing code, you're gonna say, what are the minimum requirements? Anybody can have more than those requirements. You're writing minimum requirements. This is saying that the minimum required requirement should not include a four year degree, nor should it include a professional certification. But should have a minimum level of competency that you'll come up with in a letter of transmittal. We're just voting on that. If you don't agree, if you think a minimum qualification should be a four year degree, or you think it should be a four year degree or this, that's fine. Just vote no, 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 no on this. That's fine.
I just wanted to make sure it's clear, because you know, the way it's written, you know, whatever we come up with in the transmittal letter can't have a four year degree requirement only, but perhaps maybe included, I guess, as I guess maybe I'm just painting myself in a corner here. But I see it as not both. I see it only a minimum defined competency level that does not have a four year degree requirement in it.
I I think where you're getting, I think where you might be getting
Tunnel vision?
Tunnel vision is that really we did a dynamic shift, a paradigm shift. When he decided to discuss the fact that we would have some form of competency level, not not anything having to do with degrees or college or anything. So when we shifted that way, we decided to write this transmittal letter, like what he's gonna come up with some kind of competency level.
Yeah, so I'm I'm voting.
I recommend that you guys try to move forward here if you can, so that we can do a letter of transmittal. If it turns out that no one can agree with that letter of transmittal, then you'll make a motion to rescind this motion. We can always back ourselves out of things, but we're spinning now and we need to move forward.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, so that's that's a yes for me. And I'm I'm on board with that. As we define it further. And I I don't really care whether we have a requirement for our bachelors or don't have a requirement. I I don't think that's all that important. I think the competency is what's important. I think that's where we're all driving at anyway.
Thank you.
So that's a yes for me.
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Fritsch.
Well, let's move forward. That's a yeah, yes for me.
Okay, Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Scootley?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Corbin? A respectful no. As I stated earlier, but happy to happy to work with whatever the group chooses to do here. So yeah, all right. Okay. Motion passes six, one. All right, that concludes the hearing on the definition of qualified professional. We'll take a five minute recess and then we'll come back to begin the workshop on the comprehensive plan periodic update. Thank you. Yes. Yeah, okay, okay.
Well, I'm not presenting.
All right, I'm gonna go ahead and I'm gonna go ahead and reconvene the planning commission meeting tonight. We have a workshop to begin. And so thank you, commissioners, for your discussion. We're gonna go ahead then and move right on to the workshop. Mindy?
I'm sorry, I don't know how to turn off the chime. It was on the timer.
Are you hearing the chime? Not an open window, no?
Okay, thank you. Okay, now we can move on.
Okay, all right. So the next item on the agenda is the workshop on the comprehensive plan periodic update. The purpose of a workshop is for staff to present information about the topic and for the commissioners to ask questions. There are no decisions being made on the workshop items tonight. So I will now turn it over to Mindy. Thank you, Nick.
Thank you. So tonight's presentation will be given by our consultants. Erin and Clay are online. And Erin, you should have control so you can share the presentation.
Hey, and everyone can hear me, correct?
Yes.
Great. All right, just one moment. Ooh, am I sharing the wrong screen? One moment.
I can see it.
We can see it in the room, Erin.
Oh, great, okay. But it's it's the presentation slide. It's not the notes slide, right?
It is the presentation slide.
Okay, great. So Mindy, are you okay for me to begin? Yes, all right.
Yes, go ahead.
All right.
Stopped away from her desk.
Well, thank you very much, planning commission. My name is Erin O'Kelly. I am a long range planner and I work for Kim Lee Horn. We are the consulting firm working for Lewis County for the periodic update comprehensive plan. On the call also tonight, we have Clay White. He's the project manager. I believe he has met you guys before at the August joint work session with the Board of County Commissioners. I don't know if you guys remember or not. So I'm meeting you guys for the first time, so it's very nice to meet you. We really appreciate the time tonight. I know a workshop after a hearing is not the funnest thing ever. I hope we have kind of condensed this presentation down for you tonight. So we, this is kind of the first presentation in the start of, you know, the stretch of the periodic update kind of adoption process. So these are the briefings that we would like to do. We will be doing a series of three briefings for just the comprehensive plan. And then Mindy will be doing a couple of briefings for the sub area plans that will be accompanying this over the next couple of months. So please don't be alarmed or anything, you know, I know it's late in the night. So we'll be back in a couple of weeks to discuss with you again, policy changes and kind of the whole comprehensive plan. But tonight, I will be kind of just getting us into the start of the the discussion. So we wanted to start the briefings off by doing a really high level overview of everything that Lewis County has been doing for the periodic update that goes into the process. It's quite an involved process. We know that it's regulated by the state, but there is a lot of moving parts. There are, there's coordination with the county and cities, you know, through the planning growth committee. There's some analysis, there's a lot of data collection that has to go through. So we wanted to start the briefings for this by giving a really high level overview of what happened in the last year, what Lewis County has been working on to kind of bring you all up to speed. And then the next two briefings, we want to dive deep into how the policies have changed as a result of the work that Lewis County has been doing. So tonight I'll do the periodic update overview. And then we're gonna talk about the timeline for the rest of this year. You guys have seen already the planning commission kind of schedule. You guys mentioned it at the beginning of this meeting. Well, we'll dive deep into that a little bit. And then I will talk about, just do a quick recap on last year. Just kind of highlighting some key events that Lewis County did as part of the periodic update, just to remind you of everything that happened. So just kind of catching everyone up to a certain point, so that the next meeting, when we come back, me and Clay and Mindy, we will be able to kind of dive deep into the policies. So just kind of a a big picture snapshot again. I know Mindy shared this at her, at the beginning of her presentation. So the periodic update is directly involved with these particular things circled on the screen. So it's the comprehensive plan. We have to remember the countywide planning policies that are done in coordination with the cities. The comprehensive plan and the periodic update also reviews the urban growth areas. And then we all, we have to make sure that corresponds with Lewis County's zoning maps and land use designate, land use and development regulations. So that's title seventeen, title sixteen, title seventeen point thirty eight, which is the critical areas. So just keeping in mind that these are the key things that we're talking about during the periodic update. The Growth Management Act, obviously, Shoreline Management Act are state regulated and they are involved. But they're not being updated during this time. All right. So for the periodic update, Lewis County and associated counties are primarily focused on four main things. And that is during the periodic update, we have to ensure consistency with the Growth Management Act. And we have to accommodate for population and housing projections. So that means that any of the population growth that we anticipate for the next twenty years, Lewis County has to understand where that growth is going to occur, which cities, which urban growth areas. We then have to review, make sure there's capacity, and we have to understand how we're going to accommodate for that. So that's updating land use designations or anything. During the periodic update, we also update all of the required elements with data and analysis that is required. So if you think of the Lewis County Comprehensive Plan, the current Comprehensive Plan has the land use element, housing element, transportation element, capital facilities. Those all have associated kind of analyses that we do. So for land use, we assess the capacity for the housing element, we assess the housing capacity. And capital facilities, we assess the existing capital facilities that are available, what is able to be provided. So there's a lot of analysis that goes into each element. So for the last year, Lewis County has been working on those that data collection and analysis. And then the final thing that we do during the periodic update is we reflect the community's vision for the future. And this is something I feel like a lot of people are very focused on, number one. A lot of people get very focused on the new state requirements that are kind of coming down from the state. But there is also an opportunity to reflect the community's vision and enforce. You know, in the last ten years, we've seen this change in the community. So we need to also be making sure the comprehensive plan is providing for these opportunities. You know, one example that I've heard from the planning commission and the board is economic development and business and stuff like that. And that's not necessarily coming from the state. That's not a state requirement right now, or it's not new state legislation. So I do want to just emphasize that even though during the periodic update, it can be difficult when you're working with so much state requirements, it is still an opportunity for you to revise the comprehensive plan and make sure that and make sure that the community's vision is the forefront. And so we have been working the past year to try and uphold or understand the community's vision and try and incorporate that into policies. And the community vision is collected through the engagement opportunities that we've done in the last year. So I will touch on the community engagement that we did in 2024 a little bit later in this presentation. So for the rest of this presentation, I'm gonna kind of touch on these four points that are involved with the periodic update and talk about how Lewis County accomplished these kind of milestones for the periodic update this last year and how it kind of brought us to right now before we go into the next meetings for discussing the changes that we've done for policies that we're proposing. And then I do wanna just highlight tonight and the next two briefings that we're doing with the Planning Commission, we're not discussing development regulations or the critical areas ordinance. So it's just comprehensive plan and policy discussion for right now. So as far as consistency with the Growth Management Act, I know that Mindy has been providing the Planning Commission with some updates already, but we just wanted to kind of come back and remind the Planning Commission that one of the major tasks that we have to undertake during the periodic update is making sure that Lewis County is compliant with state requirements. And so these are just some of the, some of the state legislation that has passed since the last periodic update that we have to go through and ensure that Lewis County is remaining compliant or is now compliant with the, with the new legislation. And this legislation can apply to policies in the comprehensive plan, it can go to development regulations. It's kind of a mixed bag, and it's really just up to us and Lewis County and Mindy to, we have to go look through everything, look through the countywide planning policies and make sure everything is compliant. There were specifically four, you know, more important pieces of legislation that we're going to discuss for this periodic update more frequently, or it's a lot more prevalent in the changes that were resulted with the comprehensive plan that you'll see in the next couple of meetings. So one piece of legislation that we'll bring up very frequently is HB 1220, and this is the housing legislation. And so this was the legislation that required jurisdictions to break out housing allocations by the income brackets. So previously, in previous years, we would originally dole out population allocations to urban growth areas by, you know, population size. And the updates to the legislation now say we also have to provide housing allocations by income that's affordable to specific income brackets. And then that made some changes to how the housing policies were constructed for Lewis County. And that also changed a lot of the coordination between the cities and Lewis County as well. So if you can think about originally, you know, some of the urban growth areas would just have kind of a blanket number of like, you're gonna be expected to grow by this many people. Now that is kind of changed to, you're gonna grow by this many people, and then you need to provide this much single-family versus this much multifamily. And that's affordable to certain income brackets. So if you think about it in that sense, there was a lot of extra planning that had to go into coordination with the cities and Lewis County, and we're still kind of discussing, you know, how that's going to work out in policy as well. Another important piece of legislation, I'm sure you guys are very aware, was HB 1181, and this is the climate legislation. So now, Lewis County, we are introducing a new climate element and resiliency sub-element. For HB 1181, it added some new growth management, some new climate goal to the growth management goals in the Growth Management Act. The resiliency sub-element also has some additional conditions and analysis and data collection that I will kind of break down a little bit later in this presentation. But that really is one of the main takeaways, is now there's a whole new sub-element for Lewis County and element that wasn't there before. Two other pieces of legislation that we wanted to highlight was SB 5275, which discusses new opportunities that we can use in the lammers, which are limited areas of more intense rural development, if anyone's unfamiliar. And then SB 5368, which talks about, encourages rural economic development, which is just especially relevant to Lewis County as we're trying to look for economic development opportunities. It's definitely something that was brought up by the Board of County Commissioners and staff during our discussions in 2024. Mindy, did you have anything to add for the legislative section?
No, that's great. Thank you, Erin.
Great. Hey, so the other part of the periodic update is accommodating the population and housing projections. I've already talked about this a couple of times already, but it is required by the state. So the state allocates a specific population to Lewis County, and then Lewis County is required to coordinate with the cities, who is accepting all of that growth. So we just want to point out at the beginning that there was growth allocated to Onalaska, UGA, Packwood, and then the other rural unincorporated areas of Lewis County. And then, this is the new legislation, HB 1220, that breaks it out further into income levels. So it's affordability by area median income. So Lewis County allocated housing growth to Onalaska UGA and Packwood UGA, and it's expected to provide housing opportunities for, you know, 30 to 50% of the area median income, 50 to 80, 80 to 100, and so on. And so this really means that in Onalaska and Packwood, Lewis County is expected to provide the housing type that is affordable to people earning 30 to 50% the area median income, 50 to 80%. So when you think about it in that sense, one thing I like to do is, you need to think about it by single-family housing type is affordable to 100 to 120% or higher area median income. So that means Lewis County needs to be diversifying the housing opportunities just a little bit more to increase the affordability. So getting down to 30, 50% area median income, because single-family is no longer affordable to the standard 30, anyone earning 30 to 40% or 50% their area median income. So this was a really big change in the previous Lewis County Comprehensive Plan. It was not broken down as detailed. So when we come back, you know, for the next two meetings, and we're talking about the land use policies and the housing policies, just keep this in mind that this is one of the reasons we had to diversify the policies a little bit. We're breaking up the standard housing types that are in the policies. We're adding more housing types in the policies, and we're kind of distributing where those are going to Onalaska and Packwood UGA. And when you look at the distribution of housing types and growth, this is really what we're talking about. I still wanna very clearly emphasize that we expect a lot of the growth in Lewis County to be in Centralia, urban growth area, and specifically in the Centralia city boundary, and then also in the Shehalese city boundary. So a lot of the growth is still going into the urban areas that it should be, where there are facilities. But there is some growth going to the unincorporated areas that Lewis County is, has jurisdiction over, which is Onalaska and Packwood, and then the unincorporated areas. So there has been some changes to policies in these areas to accommodate that growth. But still, keeping in mind that the large amount of growth is going to the urban areas and the largest cities in Lewis County. After we looked at where the growth is going and how we're going to accommodate that growth, we again reassess the land use designations for Lewis County, and we make sure that the land use designations accurately align and can help with the implementing zoning underneath in Title 17 for Lewis County's Land Use and Development Regulations. I will say, you know, there's been minimal changes to the land use designations here. We've had some adjustments in some boundaries of land use designation specifically for the IPAT UGA and for the swap that Centralia is doing with their UGA. But otherwise, land use designations for this periodic update have been pretty minimal. I don't know, Mindy, is there any other highlights you wanted to do for land use designations?
No, I think you're absolutely right. I think that probably the two biggest ones you hit on is the IPAT UGA. Is, we're changing that in light of Trans Alta coal closing down and needing that space to change over to something else. And then Centralia's UGA is decreasing by about 700 acres. That is what Centralia has requested, is a reduction of about 700 acres. And the swap that Erin mentioned is, we will, we are recommending that a UGA be placed on Packwood. The reason why that tends to kind of be thrown into the swap language is because at the state level, the state kind of likes to see you not expand total area of UGA across your whole jurisdiction. And so if we kind of stay in the realm of it's all about the same, then then it doesn't trip any major concerns. So that's why we tend to call that one a swap.
And then I'm gonna dive just a little layer deeper. So the land use designations, we look, wait, I'm gonna swap back real quick. So we look at the land use designations, and we make sure that we have adequate capacity, and the designations are there so that we can accommodate growth. So that's kind of the first layer. And then the second layer is, we look at the implementing zones that Lewis County has with the land use designations. And we need to align all that up, and that's per the Growth Management Act. We are required to update land use designations to accommodate growth, and then update all the development regulations. And so there's just a couple of things that I wanted to highlight. I don't wanna throw anyone off too much right now, because we'll discuss it in the next couple of meetings. But, you know, with the Onalaska UGA and the Packwood UGA, there are, you know, a couple new zones that we do anticipate are gonna be introduced in this process through the sub-area plans of the Onalaska and Packwood Subarea Plan and the new policies that we're introducing during this periodic update. So we have the CBZ Zone, MU, it's in the second line of this table, RVL, etc. And those zones have some diversity in housing types to accommodate different levels of income as a result of HB 1220 that I just mentioned. And they also address some other state requirements. But I just wanted to emphasize that this is kind of a critical part of this periodic update, is kind of utilizing the Onalaska UGA to provide some urban housing types based on new state requirements of providing housing by income bands and not just single-family. And providing it where there's urban levels of service that we can provide. So, yeah, it's just a big change to, you know, introduce these new zones. And so we will be kind of continuing on in this discussion, and this is just kind of introducing you to it. So Mindy will also be doing some briefings on the Packwood Subarea Plan, the Onalaska Subarea Plan in February. But this is just kind of a piece that's part of it, but it's all a part of accommodating population and housing projections, and it helps us meet the state requirements as well. In addition to, you know, Packwood, providing a lot of other benefits that Mindy will also discuss as well. But it's definitely one of the benefits. And then some other changes to the lammers are the rural small community kind of goals in the comprehensive plan. And the implementing zones for that, you know, we'll see some updates to that as well in the development regulations, some, a little bit diversity in housing types to kind of expand that a little bit beyond the single-family housing types as well. So that's the main thing I wanted to point out with this table. There's nothing like crazy, but there's just some new zones coming down the pipeline, and they are really for the main purpose to accommodate housing and accommodate and provide new opportunities for the residents in these areas and services as well.
Erin, can I just chime in just to, I'm sure everybody knows that those ones that are related to Onalaska and Packwood are specifically called out by the communities in those sub-area plans. So we're not, we're not diverting all of a sudden away from what those sub-area plans are. These are the implementing zones. It's just that those weren't in our comp plan before, and now they are, which is why Erin is highlighting those as a big change to the comp plan, but they are directly in align with those sub-area plans.
Hey. So the other part of the periodic update is just updating the elements. It seems rather simple to update the elements, but I just wanna highlight all of the kind of extra background tasks that kind of go into updating the elements, because updating the elements involves a heavy lift of getting all of the existing condition data, and that's land uses, housing, census data, capital facilities, trying to just gather all that up, and then doing any analysis that's required by the Growth Management Act, and then any of those findings that result, and those go into the policies then that we kind of relay. So I just wanted to kind of highlight the different analyses that went into that goes into the periodic update and that we performed last year that we will be sending over to the Planning Commission. So you should be familiar with some of these analyses, if you're familiar with comprehensive plan periodic updates. But first is to understand, you know, sufficient capacity of land, which is, we call the land capacity analysis. We've performed a land capacity analysis for Onalaska, UGA, and Packwood. And then we do a housing needs assessment, so we take all of the housing. We just assess affordability and housing capacity for Lewis County's unincorporated areas. Again, this plays into how we update the policies, because if we understand or assess that there is a really severe affordability issue or anything like that, or a geographic availability issue, then we will usually incorporate those findings into the policies. So it's part of the analysis that we do. Then the capital facilities plan, of course. It is obviously required by the Growth Management Act that you provide adequate public facilities where you are providing growth. So we always have to, anytime Lewis County assesses new growth allocations, we need to also double-check the capital facilities as well. So we looked at the capital facilities for Onalaska and Packwood. Packwood obviously has been going through extensive Packwood obviously has been going through extensive uh public facilities kind of. Reviews through the subarea plan as well. So there are a lot of other moving parts to that. But um, we did do a capital facilities update. And there is an updated capital facilities plan that will be going with this um periodic update when we provide you all the documents. Um, and then we do a. Technical uh transportation network kind of analysis. So. We use all the land use assumptions, any of the growth, and then we just. Reassess all of the transportation networks. We see what needs to be improved. Um, we check. Any kind of potential projects that need to be done or anything like that. So, um. We did that, we performed that between, I think, June twenty twenty four to like August twenty twenty four of last year. Um, and have been kind of working through that and then that gets all put into the appendix of the comprehensive plan that you guys will see. Um, but the new analysis that you guys. Have not seen is totally new to Lewis County is the climate element. So there is a required analysis of assessing Lewis County's climate. Um, well, just assessing Lewis County's assets. So we have to do an asset inventory for Lewis County. And that's just Lewis County's um controlled assets. And then we have to do a hazards analysis for Lewis County. Um, so we do have some climate memos and actually I know Mindy did share those with you. She's been kind of, I know she's been. Doing updates on all of these with you as well, but I'm just reminding you. Uh, that we we did these and I do want to briefly. Kind of go back into the climate analysis. Um, and just kind of highlight what that entails, just because it's such a new analysis for the state of Washington. We haven't done it yet. It's kind of, people aren't familiar with it. So I was just gonna kind of briefly talk about the climate asset inventory and hazards analysis summary. Um. So required by the state. Lewis County is required to do a climate element and a resiliency sub-element. And the main um goals of the element are to identify, protect and enhance natural areas. Foster residency for climate impacts. Uh, we need to enhance community resiliency. And then addressing natural hazards created or aggravated by climate. So this. Has some examples of sea level rise, uh particularly for Lewis County that includes flooding. Um, we know that that is hazard that Lewis County has already been dealing with. So, um, as far as the analysis that we did for this. Um, our team reviewed over eight or wow, I was about to say eight hundred, sorry, one hundred. So our team reviewed over one hundred assets, uh and these are just county assets. We go through all of the. We go through the shoreline master program, hazard mitigation plan, um. Comprehensive plan, just any adopted plans that are relevant in the last like five to eight years and we inventory all those assets. Then we look at how vulnerable those assets are to any hazards. So um, the most common hazards that came up when we looked. At the vulnerability to the Lewis County's assets. Again, this is like. The assets under Lewis County's jurisdiction. Um, the hazards that came up most frequently were extreme precipitation, flooding, reduced snowpack, avalanche or wildfire. Um, so according to the state law, the new legislation. Um, we are required to come up with goals and policies that help. Um. Mitigate any damage or hazard. Own uh issues for these assets against these specific hazards. So what we're supposed to do is I is like. Utilizing these priority hazards that we've identified and the. Community assets we've identified, we have to come up with goals and policies that help protect those assets. Um, so some of the findings that our team came up with that I just wanted to highlight are. Really based around. Uh, one, emergency preparedness, which was also mirrored in our discussions with the community. And our discussions with, you know, uh, emergency management department. So there were, there was a lot of discussion in the last year about. Emergency evacuation routes signage, um. It like understanding how we can create redundancies in evacuation routes. That's a very specific thing for Lewis County. Uh, especially because we have just the very two critical state routes, especially for Eastern Lewis County to get to Western Lewis County. Um, and then bridges was a very big thing. So understanding that we have some assets, especially bridges, that are very vulnerable to flooding and other hazards. Um, we did come up with. Uh, a specific set of goals and policies. That would help Lewis County to be more resilient to those specific hazards and protect those assets. Um. And again, I kind of want to reiterate that. A lot of the goals and policies that you guys are gonna see are very focused around emergency preparedness. Um, this is coming from our conversations that we had with Department of Emergency Management. Um, and then also. With just the community and some of our conversations with the community, we had a lot of people say that they wanted some. I guess. Options or alternatives or policies that would help uh against flooding, but also if flooding did happen, so adaptation or mitigation efforts as well. So that, the climate stuff played quite a big role. In this periodic update. Um, I think partly just because it wasn't in the periodic update before and it's now being required by state law. And also there was a huge effort from the community about wanting this, you know, it was, it was like one of the highest. Um, can't remember. Mindy, in the first survey, I can't remember what they, what was the option, but it was emergency preparedness was like one of the biggest.
Yeah, yeah, it had to do with um, you know, concern over natural hazards and addressing natural hazards and the and the issues of. Particularly, we we put in there like, for example, flooding and wildfires, um, and that. Was very, very high um in community concern.
Yeah, yeah. So. Um, so it'll be part of the conversation when we come back and discuss the policies and uh. Definitely was a big, played a big role in this particular periodic update. Hey. So. Just looking ahead, I know I kind of alluded to the next couple of meetings that we have with you guys, but. We do have two more briefings. Um, just on the comprehensive plan. And then Mindy will also do a briefing. For the Onalaska Subarea Plan. She will also do a briefing on the Packwood Subarea Plan and these are all kind of collectively the new. Like setting the new direction for the growth and housing and stuff for these areas. So it's great that these are all kind of being updated together. It's really awesome that Mindy did these subarea plans the same time we're doing the periodic update. And then we will kind of move into the hearings for those. Then we will go back to the development regulations um that will accompany. Honestly, the comp plan and the subarea plans again, all kind of packaged together. Um, and then we will also do the critical areas. And that will move you guys out to July. Then I know you guys talked about it earlier, but you don't have too much after that, so can figure it out. And then I just wanted to briefly. Talk about, you know, kind of everything we've done last year so far. Last year so far, sorry. So, um, for the engagement that we've done, we rely heavily on. Public meetings. So Mindy does go to a lot of public meetings. Last year she went to quite a few even prior district meetings, any of the public meetings that she went to, she was very adamant about. Advertising the comprehensive plan, the periodic update and getting involved, getting the public involved. She did multiple meetings, you know, she did monthly updates also to the Plan Growth Committee, Planning Commission, Board of County Commissioners. Um, we did do some open houses. So we did the October twenty twenty four open houses. We did do a community wide survey in uh April to May of twenty twenty four and then we did another community wide survey. Um. Accompanying the open houses in October twenty twenty four. Uh, Mindy did go to a couple of pop-up events, just advertising the periodic updates. There was a couple of climate related engagement events and then I don't want to discredit. The public meetings also, um, Mindy did quite a few. Between, what was it, Mindy, September to December twenty twenty three?
Yeah, we did um some uh public meetings specifically for the comp plan for scoping. You guys will remember that before we scoped, I had scoping meetings with the community. And brought that information forward to you. So we did those across the county as well.
Yeah. And that was before we were popped on, but um, there was. Really good turnout at those meetings. You had four of those meetings. You had a great turnout.
Yeah, I had really great turnout at those. Um, I think everybody in the room is aware that public engagement around these issues is something I find really, really important. And for setting policy and direction, I want every voice at the table.
And then if you look at the full timeline, so yeah, since September. Of twenty twenty three until end of December twenty twenty four. We have been very consistently doing public. Just public meetings, not planning commission meetings like every few months. Um, so and then we have also done. I know we've utilized the online newsletters that we can and. Uh, I don't know whether social media you guys do, but I know we utilize the online newsletters. So we then did also get about seven hundred and eighty eight. Surveys, online surveys were collected, two community wide surveys, eight public meetings, and I think the eight public meetings. Is counting yours. I can't, I can't actually.
Yeah, those those ones in that little chunk in the middle include the planning commission meetings, which your meetings are open to the public.
Yeah.
You advertise those.
Yep. Yeah, so uh we will have the final community engagement report also associated with the comp plan. Um, it, there is a current draft also on the uh project website, on Lewis County's website as well. So anyone could go look at that. There's also um. Copies of the climate analysis we've already done, any any draft documents we've already produced for the project. You know, you're welcome to go, anyone's welcome to go look at those as well. Um, then I just want to highlight, so we just kind of overviewed. Tonight, the growth allocations, the data collection analysis that we did last year. Any reconciled targets and then the next two meetings, we will be talking about the actual policy revisions. We'll dive a little bit more into the actual elements, what we've added to the elements, what's gonna change. Um, yeah, so. Next two meetings are the goals, policies and maps. And that is the end of my presentation.
Erin, you want to go back really quickly to the goals, policies and maps thing? So there, as you can tell, you guys, this is a massive body of work. There are tons of technical documents that are being produced for this as background information. They get adopted as reference. You will be recommending. To the Board of County Commissioners, the goals, policies and maps of the comprehensive plan. We've not given that to you yet. We will. I'm gonna give it to you and that's what you're recommending, goals, policies and maps. Right? Not the development regulations. We just talked about development regulations, right? Definitions are development regulations. These are goals and policies. So these are high level. This is direction setting. Right? And so that's what Erin is reviewing, starting to review with you now, what we will be covering for the next three meetings. And then we're gonna get into some specifics around Packwood and Onalaska, still goals, policies, maps. Right? And then you guys are gonna have hearings about goals, policies and maps to make those recommendations. And then we're gonna get back into development regulations. So I just, I want to be really clear and I want to make sure that you guys understand what you're doing. Do you understand what you're doing? What we're doing over the next few months? Do you get it? Because if you don't, please ask me right now. What are we doing? Because it's really important that you understand as I send you documents, as we print documents, that you know what you're looking at. That you understand what the pieces of information are in front of you and what your job is here. If you don't understand what your job is. In the next few meetings, please, please ask me so I can help you understand what you're doing. You can ask me right now. I'm up. It's it's only nine four or eight forty eight. It's almost nine PM. I've only been awake for the last fifteen hours, but let's do this.
Where, where are the current goals, policies and maps for us to look at?
Yep, the current are online. If you go to our webpage, the community development webpage, there's adopted plans and the adopted comprehensive plan is there. So the comprehensive plan, that document, when we say comprehensive plan, it's the goals, policies and maps. Development regulations, critical areas, or it's, those are called implementing ordinances. Right? So the comprehensive plan, goals, policies and maps was adopted in twenty seventeen. It's online under adopted plans on our community development webpage. So you're welcome to take a look at it.
Seventeen thirty eight, critical areas.
Yes.
Is that goals, policies and maps or is that? When I read what I need to do on critical areas, which one am I reading?
Yeah, so, so.
Maps or the other one?
So you're gonna, you're gonna, I mean technically everything, but seventeen thirty eight is an implementing ordinance. Right? So that's phase, that's like step two, right? But the goals, policies and maps. Do lead us towards a lot of stuff, right? Because we have goals and policies around protecting wetlands for all the host reasons we do that.
That we write the detail. Seventeen thirty eight's the detail for the goal.
Right. The goal says this is where we want to be. This is our goal and the and the implementing ordinance is how you do it. Goals and policies are what we want to do, our big pictures, our big visions. Implementing ordinances are how we get there.
Yeah, I guess. So when you ask me, do I understand where we're at? Do I understand that? Yes, I understand. Goals, policies and visions and I read them, but from that detail gets written. That im- that impacts my life. I care about the detail. I don't know that I care that much about goals, policies and maps. Because the detail hasn't been generated from that. So I'll read it. And I'll nod my head at you that it's okay, but until you put it into policy. It's it's hard for me to say, oh, this one's better than that one, Mindy.
You are one hundred percent right. Most people have a very difficult time in the goals, policies phase of this work, right?
The only thing I really need, what I need, the way my brain works, I don't care, you know, about them. But I always need to sort of go back to thirty five thousand feet and then back in and and come back out. To we're on goals, policies and maps for critical areas. Bob, we're just talking general again, remember? It's goals, policies and maps where nothing's detailed yet. But you know, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
To keep coming in and out because otherwise I get confused.
I know.
Into what is five hundred foot of a buffer versus a goal policy.
Absolutely. And you're not alone. Most, like, like I said, most people have a hard time. At the goals and policy stage because our brains want to see the exact details that are, right? We all want to do that. That's perfectly normal. That that you feel that way. Most people feel that way. But we do have to set those goals and policies because they're what we test our implementing ordinances against. Right? So in five years, if somebody. Somewhere says, we want to change the regulation to be X and I look at the policies and say, well, that violates our policies. We can't do that, right? Now, I guarantee you that Erin and Clay are gonna put together stuff for you that all works together. Everything is gonna work together for you. Uh, that is the point of what we are doing is putting our plan together to comply with state law and the community's visions, but. We will do our best to help you maintain where you need to be level wise. But I don't want people to get, to get lost. In this and it's easy to get lost because there's so much information. It's huge, right? And you guys can choose how detailed you want to go. If you want to get told, like I like to say, I like to nerd out on things. If you want to nerd out on the land capacity analysis, go for it. If you don't want to touch it, don't. Your choice. If you don't wanna touch it, don't, your choice, right? That's up to you guys how deep you wanna go into the materials, okay? Jeff, you had a question?
Yeah, I, I wrote a question down when I was reading through this, uh, you know, probably a couple days ago. How big is the U G A in Lewis County now?
Total U G A area? I'm not sure. Do you know, Erin, what totally unincorporated U G A acreage is?
Unincorporated, but just Onalaska or Packwood?
All of it, like all combined up, you wanna just, you wanna know the total acres of unincorporated U G A?
No, I don't know, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we can pull it.
You have on the webpage is, is two thousand four hundred and ninety-some square miles. Uh, of the whole area, and one percent is U G A.
Where are you, where are you looking?
It was on your webpage. So it was, it's about twenty-five square miles of U G A. And I'm just trying to figure if that's true or not.
So I need to know where you're looking, so I can look at it and look at the context around it.
Yeah, I was rummaging through the webpage, I'll have to.
Okay, yeah, let me know.
Really small, um, you know, let me stop sharing and I can look it up.
We can absolutely do, um, we can pull it, it's just G I S data. I, I just don't think we have for this.
Follow-up to that is, you know, let's say it is twenty-four, twenty-five square miles. I- is that area provided with uh. Fire safety right now?
So we are required through this to demonstrate that over the twenty years, that governmental services and adequacy of services will be provided to those spaces. So that's part of the test that we do during our comprehensive plan.
Know the line, but I'm coming back to Winlock, obviously.
So Winlock no longer has a U G A.
I know, it's.
Winlock is completely the city.
Anixed into the city, but it's still the same zoning that was put in place twenty, thirty years ago.
It's not, it's, no, because.
Close, I voted on it.
No, no, wait, just, hold on.
Winlock.
It's not because it was urban growth area, and that was a specific designation, and it's not anymore. It is now the city's responsibility, not our responsibility.
I know it's the city's responsibility now, but they really don't care. They're trying. We have, in my opinion, my humble opinion, uh, fifteen hundred acres of undeveloped land. That is now catching fire every six months. There's nobody living on it, there's absentee owners. And it's not under anybody's jurisdiction anymore.
No, it's under the city, so I ha, I mean, I gotta, I have to ask, we can't keep talking about Winlock. Winlock is not.
Examples.
I know, but Winlock's not our jurisdiction, so it's the city's jurisdiction now, so I'm happy to talk about the other cities. And their urban growth areas and what's happening with them.
Cities have converted U G A areas then.
How much annexation has happened, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, this is all U G A. What are the maps of the U G A?
Yeah.
Maps and policies.
Yep, so we will absolutely pull together total acreage of U G A, we have all the maps of the urban growth areas for all of the cities.
Are any of those U G As under current fire protection?
They are all within fire districts.
Yeah, so that means no. Is there, are, are there hydrants? There are no hydrants in the U G A area for Winlock, for example. Are there any hydrants in, in the other?
As, yeah, so as those areas develop out, as the urban development happens, the hydrants go in. That's when you put the hydrants in is, is coincident with the development.
Just the opposite of what actually happens.
Okay, so I can't speak to Winlock, I can only speak.
I, I'm talking of years of development experience.
I think probably what we need to do is you and I need to sit down and look at specific examples, unless if the rest of the group wants to get into the details on this. But the development, when we do our comprehensive plan, it is set up so that we do adequate, adequate facilities as development occurs. And that is when you test for all of those things. The urban growth area does not have to have urban services in it when it's in an urban growth area. It does as development occurs, right? So you have lots of U G A, no sewer, no water, no nothing. It's still at a very low density. As development happens, all of that comes into it. You're looking at twenty years of growth in the urban growth area, not today, but over the next twenty years.
Understand all that.
Okay.
Um, the follow-up question to that is the people, the absentee landowners, can they be uh, required? Uh, to uh, maintain for fire protection, for example, the brush and growth of, of just. Former farmland that is now.
We.
Jeff, Jeff, you've asked that question before. And, and, well, you shouldn't keep asking the same question. I mean, absentee guys in Winlock. Anyway.
If you, if this, if the county would like to have landscaping laws that we apply. And have code enforcement associated with that, so that we have rules that apply to how you landscape your property, that is what that is. Maintaining your la, your uh, vegetation on your property is a landscaping law. If we wanna write landscaping code, we can, and then we have to enforce that. I do not believe that our county commissioners have any desire. To write rules about how people maintain the vegetation on their property outside of noxious weeds. So, again, if you guys wanna entertain that, you're a commission, if you guys wanna talk about that, we can talk about that as part of. Uh, the, the code development side of that in a few months, that would be, that'd be up to you guys.
Mindy, I was thinking back to the original discussion about that question is code policy. What is the difference in those two? And I was thinking about this with, with Jeff, as all of us are problem solvers, and we always wanna get into that. What, when we're discussing the codes, policies. Maybe it's land use planners that tend to like, I'm just thinking out loud. That wanna read it as if it's really detailed and all the words really matter in the code, code policy and. Everything, and we just said it sort of general, so I guess it would really help me when we get into this. To start that at thirty-five thousand feet and say, you know, this is really trying to do this. And this is what it says, and, but it's just trying to do this, and then I can go, oh, okay.
Yeah.
It, it does that, and I don't have to worry about the specific words, so.
Yeah, I think we can definitely do that. I think when Erin presents next time, what she'll be doing is giving you that thirty-five thousand level. We're not gonna go into every single goal and policy, that would kill you guys. There's thousands of them, you, your minds would explode. I think that's exactly what Erin's gonna do, is the, the sentiment of this section. And then if there are parts that you are particularly interested in, I suspect for you, there's gonna be some environmental pieces you wanna really read the words of. There may be housing pieces that others want, you know, choose what you wanna really get into, and please do. Um, but we will be giving kind of like, we'll follow your lead on how much detail you want in different sections. Otherwise, we'll probably try and stay pretty high level, cause gosh darn, there's a lot here. E- everybody pretty much get what we're doing over the next?
I'd like to make sure that everybody takes heed that, you know, the, you know, your main concerns are brought forth earlier on. So that we can deal with it, because one of the things that I'm gonna hate hearing is, you know, we get, you know, six months, nine months. You know, a year down the road, oh, we should have talked about that during, during our discussions of the comprehensive plan. So I, I would like to encourage everybody to put everything on the table, you know, and um, and do the research on the areas that, that you're most passionate about.
Uh, and the other thing I'll just echo that I've said before is, when we hand you, when you get the, the materials to you, please take a look at them early. And you can send me questions right away. You don't have to wait for this meeting, you can get questions over to us. That will really help us narrow how we present. I see both Erin and Claire like, yes, please do that. It will really help us narrow our presentations to focus on what you guys wanna hear about, rather than what we think you wanna hear about, so. You know, take a look at the materials, get us those questions right away. Okay, Erin, Clay, thank you so much for hanging out so late tonight. We really, 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 really appreciate it.
No, thank you guys, and hey, planning commission, thank you for, I know it's not great to hear a. Fresh, large presentation right after a hearing, so thank you so much, and we look forward to future discussions, I appreciate it.
Well, sorry.
In a couple weeks.
Sorry to keep you up so late after that long hearing, so.
Hey, no.
All right, well, um, the next item on the agenda is commissioner discussion, but we've been kind of doing that, so. So let's go ahead then and conclude the workshop on the comprehensive plan periodic update and um. Uh, move to good of the order, so are there any items from staff for good of the order?
Just a reminder that April eighth, the uh, hearing on the Packwood U G A will be in Packwood. I'm gonna keep saying it, so you can make sure it's on your calendar and you're planning on heading out there. Uh, we'll do like last time where we'll do, we'll get dinner ahead of time for you guys, so if you wanna come thirty minutes early, we'll. Get some food catered by somebody out there and um, and then do the hearing.
Sounds good. Any, any items from the planning commissioners for good of the order? All right, the next planning commission meeting then will be on January twenty-eighth, the agenda items will be the public benefits rating system. And the comprehensive plan periodic update. Staff, is there anything else for the calendar?
No.
I did wanna mention that I will be in Texas for the meeting of January twenty-eighth, but I think that one I can go ahead and share from, from Zoom, so. I'll give, give that a shot. Okay, all right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We are adjourned, thank you, everybody.
Gretchen, I'm glad you don't have to drive home tonight, cause I am just smoked, I am so tired.